This work session, this work session of the Board of Education for November 1, 2022 is called the order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PDS website in the board meetings. Good evening. Thanks everyone for being here this evening. We have, tonight's work session, work session will be focused, sorry, yeah, yeah, we are, we are. So tonight's work session will be a discussion focused on our board protocols. As a follow-up to the September 17th Board Retreat with governance coaches from the Council of Great City Schools. Before we dive into that this evening, you do have consent agenda to vote on. So we are in, we are in regular board meeting right now. Consent agenda, the board will now vote on the consent agenda. If there are any items you'd like to pull for discussion, we will set those aside for discussion and vote. Ms. Bradshaw, have there been any changes to the consent agenda?
No.
No changes. Board members, are there any items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda?
I don't want to pull anything, but I do want to again, point out the fact that on the contracts that we have, there is no certified difference from one of these at all. And so I'm going to make sure I'm pointing that out.
Thank you Director Hollins.
Thank you. And every, every time I hope, I hope you do point it out.
I don't want to be the only one.
Yeah, I would like to say what Gary said.
What did he say?
Do I have a motion and a second to talk about the consent agenda?
Second it.
Director Constance moves, Director Green seconds. Is there any board discussion on the consent agenda? In addition to what we discussed.
Just add it.
The board will now vote on Resolution 6601 through 6605. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Just to represent the panel.
Yes.
Any extensions? Consent agenda is approved by both of you. And now officially have to count.
Are you going to bang the table?
I know, I'm going to bang the table. Next regular meeting of the board will be held on November 15th. This meeting is adjourned. And now coming back in for work session. As I mentioned tonight, we're going to be discussing and considering the protocols that were recommended from coaches at the Council of Great City Schools on our retreat last month. And let me go ahead and dive in. Everybody should have a copy in front of them of the board protocols, a clean copy. Just so you know, what was sent around, it actually was a clean copy and a non-clean copy, but if your computer settings weren't set that way, they both showed up as red line, which was confusing. So I actually, first time like these are both red line, and then when you turn off the markup, it's a clean, it's a.
The truck changes, you can turn on.
Exactly. So I think, so anyway, so I did ask staff to go ahead and just put together this clean version. The reason, the red line that you have, sort of the second real red line, is a red line from our existing protocols to these. They're pretty significant because these are pretty significant changes. So I also want to recognize, and we were able to have converses, you know, just, just talk a little bit with a couple of board members, you know, beforehand. These are just, these are exactly what we got from Council of Great City Schools. I will tell you that I, I have some changes and that I would like to see as well in these, but I wanted to just send these out to the board, you know, so you could take a look at them. The purpose of tonight's meeting is really to go through and figure out where do we have general consensus on moving forward on some of these protocols? And where do we not, right? Where is there consensus to these changes? And then maybe where are there areas where maybe we don't, or we're not in agreement, the board is maybe a little bit split. The goal of tonight is not to make specific decisions around these because we don't have time for that. So we're not, each one of these we're going to go through. What I'm, what I'm hoping to do is we're going to, we're going to take each section as a section, let folks make comments or so forth. We're going to try and capture all that in the minutes. Then we're going to go back. Gary and I are going to discuss the feedback we got in this work session from board members. And then bring back a revised set of protocols that again, folks can review. We'll figure out at that point if we need another board discussion or if we're ready to move forward to adoption. These are something I would like to get adopted sooner rather than later, but that is the process that I was thinking about. The other thing I would like to say, just in, in moving forward, and this is actually something Director Brem Edwards brought up, which I think is a really valuable point. In a lot of ways, these are very significant change from our current process. We're also already in the middle of a school year. And so to the extent that the board adopts these protocols, you know, in, in, you know, four to six weeks, at a future board meeting, it is going to be a pretty big change. And I think viewing this as a pilot project, viewing this as, you know, sort of, let's, let's see how these new protocols, let's try them on, let's see how they work for us. Having real grace for each other as we go through this, having grace for the superintendent and staff as we make these changes is going to be really important for the overall success. So again, I think Director Brem Edwards, it was an excellent point you brought up. Sort of, I think that's, it's a good frame in terms of how we should, how we should move forward. Questions before we dive into the specifics? And again, I'm going to try and move us along.
So from what I was hearing from a lot of the conversations, on a couple of these that everybody was agreeing to strike, like for some communication number four. Do we want to just still go through all of them, or do we want to kind of go through one that got pretty consistent on to, maybe then go back or something? I mean, that's a, that's a thought.
So, so what I'm thinking today is, is, is again, taking each section, I think areas where we heard general consistency, let's say that, let's note that, right? You know, because again, those were mostly taking place in just individual conversations. I think it's good in a work session like this with the whole board to sort of note those things. But again, if there's no opposition either to keeping something or removing something, then we don't need to talk about it, except just to note that there's, there's general agreement. That way we can focus on things for the session. Any other questions before we dive in? Okay. What I'd like to do is again, take it by section. And so we'll go ahead and just start with section number one, roles and responsibilities. And I think I, you know, I don't, I don't, you all have this, so I don't need to, you know, revisit sort of what's here. But maybe just sort of open it up to questions or comments or thoughts about how the roles and responsibilities are laid out. Everyone's diving in, wants to be first. Okay?
I think one of the really interesting things that I heard, and Amy was in the session too at the council, was this idea around, I'm on as board members to do this work responsibly, we commit to. Without a pay, are we still just on the first one?
Yep, yep. No, no, we're on that whole, the whole section, yeah.
So that first page there, second section D, making decisions as a whole board only at public meetings. It, it was an interesting conversation with a person, Ben, from Dallas, saying, one of the things we have to understand is our own individual power. And that how we have to sort of understand that we're part of the collective, and that can be really challenging. So I just think that that's a really important one to note as far as we can't take standalone action, it's, it's the collective. And that that's really an important centering point for all of us, at least for me, to remember that it's, it's the work I do with the group that matters most. I just think I'm being all nostalgic, because I wind up my last year on the board and thinking about what I've done. And what I realized is I haven't actually done anything, it's been together as a team that we've done things. And so his comments were really powerful in that way.
And I would say the School Board Partners also recommends showing up collectively, but again, if you're from a culture that's more individualistic, it might be farther to go. To understand that you can't do anything by yourself, that you, you really do need other people to get anything moved.
I do just have a couple of, like, it's kind of an overall question that refers to all of this stuff. Is that ultimately like my, and I'd love to hear others, but like my role as the student representative is different, I think, in a lot of ways to the role of you all as board members. I am not publicly elected, I, my job, like I am a student, so I have different relationships with like academics and, you know, student body. I also run the district student council, which in itself, and definitely what I'm hearing from those members, is that they also want that to be a place of advocacy in which students can come and advocate things to the board. And so I wonder like how to kind of navigate the two different roles as like leading the DSC, being a voice for students. And then my role is like being on the board, because I, I don't, I also don't vote on stuff. And then I look at stuff like hiring and evaluating the superintendent annually, that obviously does, has nothing to do with me. So I guess like for future student representatives, if we're going to be taking on this new thing, then maybe trying to get some clarity for them in terms of what does your role look like? Because you do not have every privilege, and then you also have other privileges that these, you all as board members don't have, like I get to spend every day in school. Which I do see as a privilege, and also it allows me to be a lot closer to my peers and my community. So I guess just understanding like, how does the student rep fit into this when really our roles differ, in some areas quite tricky?
Yeah, it is a great point. This is, so when we're talking about like governance, I think maybe, I mean, maybe we should distinguish between what applies and what doesn't. Also in that section around meetings and what gets on a board agenda or not, if we are truly going to be student centered, perhaps we should allow a quarterly, you know, 10 minute item for updates from students from the DSC. And I don't think we have a regular, we have your student report, but we don't have the advocacy coming from the DSC as a, as a whole body.
Yeah.
So if we could somehow institutionalize a practice where we allow, you know, how we allow PAT to come and talk, whatever, we could allow this DSC to come quarterly.
And I have more questions just without like the meeting section, but I'll wait till we get there.
Well, if there's nothing else on that first section, let's dive to the second. So priority setting and board and superintendent evaluation. So again, this is broken out, sort of talk about student outcomes focused priority setting, board professional development self-evaluation, superintendent's evaluation. So again, I'm not, I'm not going to read through here, but the student outcomes focused priority setting. You know, really talking about, you know, adopting that vision, adopting, potentially adopting guardrails, which is something we have not yet done, but something we did talk about at our retreat. Aligning our work with those guards and with those goals and the guardrails, monitoring progress. You know, every month with an intention of investing, that is half of our time in board meetings and the goal monitoring. One of the questions or comments that came up in our discussions about this was making sure we actually are monitoring that, that we don't just say it. That we're actually doing some, you know, some, some, some thinking afterwards about how, how much did we spend? And then again, the board evaluation, that should be a key part of it as well, did we adhere to that?
And I think I raised that one, perhaps not from Gary. And I think part of that is in agenda setting, and part of that is in our own kind of self-regulation. Like, am I, am I really using our collective time focused on students and student outcomes, or am I talking? Back to your inspiring sermon when we were doing our day-to-day, you know, that really stayed with me.
Say it again.
Inspiring.
Yeah.
A sermon, a sermon.
You were looking for the key word there?
Herman doesn't speak, he sermonizes.
Stop it, stop it.
No, I mean sincere, that, that was very moving. And it was a, it was a call to action, I think, for all of us, like how are we spending our time, what are we talking about, and is it really the thing?
The section B here talks about board professional development and self-evaluation, that we should be evaluating ourselves annually, using a research inform instrument. Doesn't, doesn't dictate what that instrument is. So again, this has changed a little bit, this practice has been inconsistent through years I've been here, but I think it is a good practice in terms of doing that, that self-evaluation.
To that point, Andrew, the School Board Partners has a rubric that they use that takes an anti-racist, anti-racist lens in self-evaluation for board members. And I would, I'd love to share it and maybe consider using parts of it or the whole thing if possible. It's got the same criteria and rating scale as we've been used, that we've used in the past, it's just from, it's their brand.
Yeah, that would be great.
To share that with.
And, and you know, on that note, you know, we're going to be looking for a volunteer to step forward to help do our self-evaluation this year. So we should be thinking about who's really, really interested in doing that.
So we would do that at the same time, we do the superintendent's evaluation?
Yeah, it's not specified here when, but at least annually, I think that makes some sense. Yeah. And, and perhaps before, since superintendent's evaluation has now been moved to fall, after we have test data. Summer may be a good time for the board to do a self-evaluation in advance of that. And then again, superintendent's evaluation, making sure we're evaluating the superintendent based on the accomplishment of the goals, adherence to the guardrails. And, and checking with the superintendent quarterly to collaboratively assess progress towards achieving those district goals. Any thoughts on this section, any changes, any concerns?
Some comments on previous session, I didn't know, just went by them, so I wasn't sure. I'm going to go, so I'm going to go back just one.
Sure.
The, the guardrails, in order to ensure that we don't violate the protocols as soon as we adopt them, we should have a work session on the protocol, on the guardrails, before we actually adopt these. Because otherwise it will be, you know, it'll be a trailing play. And if we want to actually adhere to them when they're adopted, like, because that seems like a key piece of the work, that we should, that's just one point of view. And then the half the meeting minutes is, I, to Amy's point, I do think there is like part of its agenda. But also if half the meeting is about student goals, then there's also recognition, we, we're legally obligated to do our work and do our work in public. And we have to, I mean, we have currently, and we, we had a conversation about this, like what are all the reports that we get? That aren't things that we're legally required to do at a board meeting? So if we continue to do that, it seems like instead, if, I'd rather have half the meeting, the half that's not the student outcome be about things that we actually need to discuss inside versus just getting reports that we could actually read and send questions in. Because we, we do spend a lot of time on public comment, I mean, you think about a public comment, there's 30 minutes right there that.
An hour.
Yeah. So I guess that would just be my comment, part of it is like how we're set up. I don't see how, I don't see how we could do that unless we have like four-hour meetings, or longer, to make it half.
I think our last meeting was a good example of, you know, trying to put our student outcomes focused governance into practice where enrollment is something that we're really interested in, our community is really interested in, but it can be an email, you know? Questions?
I think this question will keep coming up for me, but I think with the self-evaluation, am I also evaluated with all of you? And is it the same, are expectations different for me than they will be for the rest of the board? And then also the board leadership will set, or will annually set expectations and priorities for board professional development. Again, like what does that look like for students? Also there's like, in, I have been researching it, and like I've been talking with the governance team that we have a conversation about in trying to develop more stuff for student board members. But as of right now, like, it's not like the landscape is bare, there's, I also think there's certainly things I can take away from development designed for regularly for like regular board members, I guess. But I think that like, I'm not voting, so like, there's just like some differences in terms of like what might be useful for me and what should be the expectation for me? And like future student reps versus like what the expectations for professional development are for like the other board members. I was thinking about like, how do we apply these things and those expectations? And then how we measure those expectations to someone who functions differently?
Yeah, excellent.
I think we should make it explicit if it seems necessary that this student rep is part of the board's self-evaluation. Like aside from what you're talking about, which is introspection on your function and the DSC function. To make clear that student rep is central to the ones.
Yeah, I just think in terms of like, if we're going to adopt this, and like obviously we're, it's up in the air whether we might keep this forever or whatever. But I think in terms of like, if we adopt anything, then we need to be taking into account like the student representative. Because ultimately like, it's also very hard for them to understand like what the dynamic is for them to follow this board. And especially since we keep changing every year, like we do need to set, like have expectations for, like after me, it will be someone completely new who has no idea what's going on. So I won't really, the student rep doesn't really get to grow alongside the other board members in terms of understanding like what expectations are. So I think making it explicit for them to understand like how they're evaluated and what they're supposed to be doing is going to be really useful.
Good point, really good point. Anything else on this section, or is there any?
Section two.
Section two, yeah. Okay. Section three, so this gets into meetings and how we run our meetings. And talks a lot about agenda creation and then timeline. So I think we have a lot to talk about here. This first section, section A, under meetings, let's, let's take that as a separate thing. You know, the agenda creation, I think this is our, our current practice in terms of board leadership, working with the superintendent, reviewing the agenda, you know, deciding what gets placed on and whatnot. But then, you know, the recommendation from Council of Great City Schools is to, is to sort things into one of three categories. Yes, it's automatically eligible to go on the board meeting agenda, no, it's not allowed on the board meeting agenda, and maybe, if, you know, with additional scrutiny. And then it sort of defines those, what, what's in the yes, what's in the no, what's in the maybe? You know, one of the comments that I, I heard about this is, is this, is this too prescriptive? In terms of, you know, could, could we just essentially stop after that first sentence that says, you know, look, you're going to, things that are requested, they go into these, one of these three categories, yes, no, or maybe? And that's fine. And you know, I, I actually, I do, I also felt this was pretty prescriptive as I read through it. I think maybe one of my questions from a, from a board, for the board to sort of consider is, you know, we do get things from board members around agenda setting. I think one of the things that, that, that Roseanne does, but we need to make sure that, you know, some of it's on Roseanne, maybe it's more on, on board leadership as well, and the board chair, is really communicating back out. So if you say, hey, I'd like to see these three things, and one of them gets on and two of them don't, you know, who's responsible for communicating back? Having these really detailed things sort of works, although I'll be honest, as I went through them, it feels like most of the, the things that are obvious are going to end up in yes or no, they're already obvious. The things that are not obvious are going to end up in maybe, which is already somewhat subjective. So that's maybe a long way of, of sort of asking.
Oh, wait, and I think that whole, this whole session should go, because having been in leadership, I think that's the point of agenda setting. Is there some things that are pretty clearly yes, like legally required to do, like we got to do it? And no, and then the maybes get discussed at agenda setting and, you know, they, that I know of, that there's not a lot of things that end up on the agenda that isn't like board leadership and the superintendent, senior staff, meaning that it should be on the agenda. So to me, I think this is all unnecessary, and I think it's way too prescriptive. And I think there's a piece that you mentioned about if somebody has an idea for agenda setting and throws it in there, then like part of the recap is like, either we didn't discuss it or like, hey, it's on, this is going to be on the agenda this month or this date, and you know, your, your question. The other thing I would say is the other thing that could also be helpful is on, under the section number two, priority setting. Under priority setting, there's a section A, five and six, in which it has, you know, about agenda setting, the board leadership will solicit input from board members. So if you're doing that from the front end. And then the second one, which is board leadership will regularly check in with the full board regarding the board meeting structure, progress on board goals, and addressing board member priorities. To me, those, those are other places for those conversations to, to occur. So.
Strike, would you?
To me, it's just like not, it's not, just not necessary.
Yeah, so I'm just curious, real quick, would you keep, would you, would you keep that, essentially the first sentence of, of Agenda A, sort of striking that and making the determination?
That's, that's my edit, like, just like, per sentence. And then, like I say, I think there is, is a model that, like I say, I don't know that I've ever seen something that get, get on the board meeting agenda that both the superintendent and the board leadership didn't agree on.
I would keep that whole section A, because if we're going to adopt it, it just makes it clear and it's clear to the public, like this is how we determine what our board meetings are and get rid of the pollings. So A is a yes.
So A, so that first sentence?
Yeah, but maybe even the whole A, you know, or at least the first. I mean, I kind of like being explicit about goals, guard, goals, guardrails.
I kind of do too. I like that it's, it's like a decision tree. But it also feels, I feel two ways about, also feels prescriptive. I mean, is this going to, if, if we adopt this, will it result in agendas that are more focused and? So if that's what the end goal is, how do we get to there? You know what I mean? That's what the goal is. The goal is that we're not like talking about everything under the side, but rather focused on student outcomes. I mean, just asking a yes or no question, like, like making a decision tree, you know, is it student-focused yes or no? Is a legal requirement yes or no?
I like to make that part clear to the public and getting rid of.
Well, the interesting thing is, it doesn't even say here under the yes, things that are legally required.
I thought it did say, it did say, cool guardrails.
Gary, did you have a?
Yeah, so I was looking at this, and I think for me, is the fact that I'm looking at it, if it's not me who knows this, right? So if you have other board coming on board, right, they might not already have your experience. So they might need to know, okay, what things that we should put on here? So that's kind of how I'm looking at this protocol piece, not so much for the ones that know what it is, but for those who might not. And then, so when I looked at it, I looked at, well, it is a little prescriptive, and I kind of looked at it as another way of, maybe we put some in here as far as, you know, legal things that we have to do as far as things that need to go on the agenda. Then we have another one as far as direct impact on kids, and then the optional category. You know, I think that keeps the focus on our kids, and also make sure that we do our requirements legally, that what we have to do as well. But I do like how it, some of this, I would just change the yes, no, maybe, to legal, direct impact on kids, and optional. But I think it is important for new board members as they come on, because, you know, the onboarding piece needs a lot of work. And so having something like this, that they, another board member can get it and be clear to say, okay, you know what, this is how this works, I think would be important as we all know.
And, and as a chair, this would have been really helpful to have when I stepped into that role. So I, I quite like it, and I think we can adapt it, but I think it's, it's super helpful to have that sort of understanding of what, what do board meetings consist of and what are our priorities?
I like it from the perspective of when I was looking to get something on the agenda, understand the process that I have to get X number of people to agree that I can even bring it up as an item to go on the agenda. And then after I get X number of people to agree that I can get it on, then I got to present it to somebody else. And then they get to decide whether or not they think it should go or, or not go. So to be able to, to be able to answer this question for myself ahead of time, that yes, you know, it, it lines up with our, our goals, is student-focused. And then to me, that would have been, that would have been helpful versus what I, you know, having to call around, ask people, how do I get this on? What do I need to do to get this on? And what's the process that I need to go through?
Raise your hand if you've gotten that question from Herman.
You know, and so, and so it's, it's, it's one of those, it's one of those situations where I feel like this type of information, this type of information is helpful. Especially not knowing, as a novice, not knowing how to get something on the agenda. And then when you ask, hey, can we put this on the agenda? Oh, well, let's, you know, let's, let's look at it. And then you never get any type of follow-up. If I don't get follow-up, then how, what am I supposed to be just, okay, what's, what's going on? So I, I do think that it's important, like you said, to, there needs somebody, and I don't want to put more work on Roseanne, because it's not like she doesn't have enough to do.
Yeah.
But somebody needs to be following back up to say, hey, we talked about it, we discussed it. And because of where we're at and what we have going on, we're not going to put it on now. We are going to get to it, but we've got this, this in front of it, and we'll get to it here, something.
It doesn't meet our criteria.
Something.
Yeah, for example, when Ailey was the chair, she sent out a note, if I sent something in, like, hey, you brought up three items, like one of them got added. One of them, we think it's going to be covered in some future work session, and the third, like, that's going to be in a committee, or, you know, whatever the answer was. But then you knew, like, it wasn't just like throwing things into the deep dark.
Abyss.
Thanks, thank you for saying that, because I had texted Andrew when he said something about maybe the board chair, or Roseanne, or someone should write back. I'm like, I did when I was chair.
Let's just settle that, so it's, it's a sentence. I actually just want to move on. It feels like I'm hearing consensus that people think the board chair should be the one communicating about the items that got on or not.
Yep.
And not putting that on Roseanne, which I agree, because I think that way, I think putting it on staff just is, is taking away from the hard decisions that board, board leadership has made.
And you've been doing that generally.
And not just what didn't get on, but like how it's going to be addressed, right? Whether it's in committee. Whether it's in committee, or we didn't think this was the board, like, that follow-up, I think is important, too. Because, you know, Julia always had good things that she raised, but it was like, maybe it's being addressed over here in this other way, or it's coming at this junior.
Which was helpful to know.
Yes.
So I have a question, this is like.
Great, so we're gonna add that, just FYI.
Is that the chair?
Yes.
Is going to, okay.
To Herman's question. So this, though, wouldn't, maybe this is a legal question, like, a board member can go, ask everybody else, like, hey, I wanna have a consensus that the full board should consider, like, I have four votes to consider this, and then go to the chair and say, I have four votes to consider it, because you, that would be like, that's your real meeting.
That's a very virtual forum, yeah.
So.
I didn't do that.
You did, but I'm.
I mean, I understand the power of that, but I didn't, I didn't do that.
Well, I'm just saying, it's like, what this says is essentially, the chair just gets to decide.
The serial meeting is illegal, Herman.
Ah.
So that's, it's not the, it's the illegality.
That's the whole illegal thing.
Right.
Julia, it's the.
Andrew passed her.
It's the serious communication that you just referred to that would not be okay, but there would still be nothing to stop a board member from just bringing a resolution on the floor.
Yeah.
Because anyone can always do that.
And there's, and again, it doesn't, it's not that a board member, from even in advance of the meeting, a board member could email and say, I am planning to bring this.
Right.
You know, and.
Do not respond at all.
You know, I hope I have. There's nothing wrong with that.
That's illegal, too.
See, I didn't know all the illegal things. Thank you, Ailey.
You're welcome. That's our way of living.
Okay, so I'm hearing a little bit of a mix, though, in terms of these, and what I'm gonna suggest to move us forward is that, I'm hearing a desire for, a desire for some clarity around why, what the criteria are, and I think both so existing, but also future board members sort of understand. But I also really liked, and Karen, probably gonna task you with this section, because I liked what you wrote about, you know, maybe, maybe, you know, sort of having, is it legal, does it have a direct impact on our kids? You know, is it optional, and sort of thinking through. So, so what I'm gonna suggest is that we, we're gonna, we're gonna rework this a little bit, but keep some of the criteria, just so there's some clarity.
Just remove yes, no, maybe with the legal. Focus, keep focused.
Okay, anything else on this before we move on to the next section?
So Byron's worried we're gonna cut our student report, because it's optional, but I think it fits in with our honoring student voice. Like, that's one of our top three things, so I don't think your student report's gonna get cut from the agenda.
I mean, I can't tell you what future chairs are gonna do, I can tell you, I will not cut your.
You're a good guy.
Okay, let's talk about this next section. So this next section about board timelines, board agenda timelines for regular meetings. So this takes us all the way down through, all the way to C. So this is about, really, it's about, it's about accountability on both sides. When do we as board members get our materials? What's our timeline for how we respond to those materials? What's the timeline for the superintendent responding to us? I will say, just right off the bat, that this, this, the sort of the 12-day timeline is a little bit more geared towards boards that meet once a month. There are lots of boards that meet once a month. It will be very, very challenging, potentially impossible, to do a 12-day timeline with every other week of meetings.
Yeah.
Question. Have we, have we thought about our, had a conversation about doing board meetings once a month?
We should talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, it came out of a little bit of a retreat, and I know, you know, folks have before. I, yes.
Some districts do it, actually, too. I have a question.
Hold on just a second, but do I, do I hear you teeing that up as a potential quarterback?
Yes, I think that should be a question as far as having them, you know, once a month. I guess when I.
Second the motion. My bad.
Because when you look at the committee meetings and the board meetings, right, we spend a lot of time in this building. I know I've spent a lot of time in this building.
How many hours were you here on Wednesday?
Too many. And so, but I'm just thinking, like, if we're going to be efficient, and I'm looking at efficiency, if we did a once-a-month meeting with having the committee meetings in between, then I think something like this could be attainable, right? And then that way, we're not trying to, you know, change it up, still having these two meetings, because we still wanna be here a whole lot of time, even with doing the two meetings. So I just thought we should bring that up, at least think about doing.
Absolutely, worth bringing up. Here's, here's my concern, I'm gonna be blunt. I don't think as, our board culture is, is, I think one meeting a month would be a six-hour meeting. Because I don't think as a board, I don't think we have the culture to move through things quickly. And if you take our, things that show up on two different agenda items, of which we usually take two to three hours each, the only way one meeting a month works is if we're willing to just move very quickly and succinctly through that. I'm gonna take this last example, you know, the Lent decision. It's a major decision that impacts, you know, the community. We took an hour and a half on it. If we're moving to once, once-a-month meetings, that's gonna be a 20 to 30-minute decision, right? Discussion, decision, vote, move on. And I'm not, I guess my question is, as a board, are we comfortable sort of, sort of doing that? Because I just, I haven't seen this board, and I haven't seen prior PPS boards either, like, be willing to really sort of say, look, our job is to move through, it's to approve things, it's not to, you know, make statements, it's not to pontificate, it's not to sort of, you know, go on. It's just, it's just to do the business of the district. And so I just worry it'll be, it'll be a midnight meeting, everyone, only once, but midnight.
I think part of what you're getting at, like, when we get to the later point about having a public Q and A with questions, so, yeah, part, part of our time is spent in board meetings asking questions sometimes, but we're looking to institute more discipline there, where people get their questions in in advance, and they're shared with everyone. So there's that, but then we have to be honest, another big time suck is people, is kinda grandstanding, you know, just not, not getting questions answered, and not conversation in service to driving toward a decision, but just like wanting to make a public statement. So if, if we are gonna get closer to that kind of efficiency, people have to be willing to let that go, which kinda goes back to your original point, Julie. And then the other way to slice it, Gary, what you're talking about here, when you raised going to once a month, the other way to slice it is just eliminating committee meetings, which many boards have done.
Yeah, I have similar concerns there about, does that just mean all that committee work then just gets done in our board meeting?
I would say some of the long discussions at the board meeting is when things come to the, a big decision comes to the board meeting, and that's the first time there's been board discussion about it. And so the practice of, like, I thought the budget calendar was a good example this last year, so we had a, hey, you know, quick, like, here's what we're thinking. If you have any, you know, at the board meeting, if you have thoughts, you know, weigh in, and then the vote was at the next meeting. And so it's not like, hey, I'm just seeing this, and then we're doing stuff on the fly. And so having this, and I mean, it's in our current, it's already in our current protocols anyway, that if something just hasn't gone through the committee, because I think most things go through the committees, you know, it's like, the facts are there, things are pretty decided, that that's a, a way in which you can speed agenda items, like, you have a quick look, and the next meeting, like, we're gonna vote on this, I mean, we did that, like, in the first bond. And I'll say, just on the Lent, is like, there was, in one week's time, very good things coming out of the district staff about trans, and, you know, I think getting clarity, like, but it was confusing to the community about what actually PPS was promising, and so that, that's why it took longer. Whereas if you had a, like, pre-meeting, anyway, I just think that.
It took longer at the board meeting? I mean, I, whether there was confusion or not, but I mean, is that why, why it took longer at the board meeting? No, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to get it, sort of the issue of why it takes so long. But here's, here's actually what I propose. Can we, can we, parking lot, the monthly board meetings, I mean, I'm, well, actually, let me ask. Unless a majority of the board wants to actually talk about that and do that right now, I think it's a good conversation to have. But I guess I'm thinking, for now, we're keeping bi-weekly meetings.
Well, this is not supposed to be implemented until what, next school year, right?
No, no.
No, we're gonna implement it now.
So if we, once we adopt the board goals, I mean, the protocols, we're not implementing them right now, right?
It's our project.
It's an implementation timeframe, right? So if we, if we vote on this, say, tomorrow, we're not implementing it at the next board meeting.
Well, I think that's, it's a conversation, the goal is to implement this as soon as we can. Yeah.
Andrew, you said something about the board's business or the board's work, I can't remember exactly what you said, but I really, I think we do a lot of things, and I wonder how much of it is actually board work. And I think our community has an expectation for us, and we have a culture of how we show up. And I'm not sure that it is the most effective or efficient for our school district. It's not, it's not the most anti-racist. Michelle, I know you brought that up a lot last year when you were chair. And so I think we have to sort of break our addiction to the busyness and to the, the way we've been. So I would be really interested to talk about a monthly board meeting in the future. I don't, it would be nice to maybe adopt the protocols and then think about it, but I know with the timeline piece of meeting materials, that might be something to think about. But how do we really get really good at doing the things that are shown to really move the district forward, rather than continuing to do the same things we've always done?
Yeah, and I appreciate that that's a big cultural shift there, but also, we think about, you know, as the board changes every couple of years, who's actually able to dedicate eight meetings a month?
Right.
It does limit who serves, and that's a big deal for us. It limits who has the time to serve when you're here every other night. It also doesn't make us look any better and busier, it makes us look like we're, we're not being effective with our time. So more meetings does not equate to more effectiveness. I'm on a board right now that meets six times a year, every other month, and when we walk in the door, the only thing we have to do is take votes on the six or eight items. It's been socialized over the two, over the eight weeks, it's organized, the conversations have happened, you know, and we walk in, and it's an hour and a half, and we can, you know, socialize if we want to. Or it's an hour and a half meeting every, every other month.
And that makes, that makes sense, because if we, if we really utilize.
And the staff is ready.
We should, then we shouldn't be having, you know, you know, we should be able to be efficient if we're utilizing the, if we're going by the guidelines that we set for the, for the committee meeting as far as having objectives, having a timeline, having the outcome of what you want to do as a committee, and then until those things get done at the committee, the committee meeting left, when the time of the board meeting comes, it should be just that simple. We shouldn't just be like, you know, this is what we're going over, this is what we're going over, this is what we're going over.
Yeah, there, there's no checkmark in that column. There's expenditure, expenditures, there's revenue contracts. And the other thing about culture change is that it's us, like, it's not up to other people. It is, we have the power to move the culture, because we are the decision-makers. So if, if we could all agree that we do, do this once a month, and we are the people in charge of kind of making that happen, like, we can't look to anybody else to do this work.
The irony is, we have three meetings a month, actually. I mean, besides the committee meetings, because we have our two board meetings, and then we have all these dates held that always get used. So like, I think we shouldn't kid ourselves that, like, we just have two meetings, it's like, there's actually, then we gotta ask, like, hey, you committed to all these two board meetings a month, and then we actually need these other dates as well. And so I think it should be a holistic look, because it's not just the two board meetings, it's, you know, tonight, we had four meetings, actually.
There's also communities.
I was trying to say something for a while.
Yeah.
Sorry, Center for Black Excellence, there's Jefferson, I mean, there's lots of community stuff, I think, too.
I just wanna echo what Andrew was saying, actually, I like you guys all a lot, but I think the likelihood that you could make one meeting a month work is like, I don't really see that as a possibility. Unless we implement some secondary structure, which is like the time limits, like, you can only talk for this long. And then if you waste your time, like pandering or whatever, then like, we're not, then you're cut off for the rest of the meeting, and you can only vote. Like, because I just, I, I totally think that so many meetings is really inaccessible. It's very inaccessible for a student. It, like, I'm a full IB student, I also do a bunch of other things, like, taking on this job was like a big choice for me, because it's so much time invested. And so I understand, like, the allure of having that meeting, but I think that, like, we already run long, having two meetings, and if I think we're having one, then we will be going well past 12 o'clock if we don't have any, like, organized time structure in terms of making sure we're not talking as much. I think what Julia said about making sure that, like, the board meeting isn't the first time we get to talk about anything is really important, because I, I do agree with Julia, that's the, some of the big reason why, like, it takes us so long, is because, like, for a lot of people, like, or for a lot of us as a board, this is the first time we've ever talked about anything, and I definitely am, like, conscientious of the amount of time I take up during board meetings as well. But I think that moving to one meeting without that secondary thing is just gonna mean that, like, we're making decisions after nine o'clock, and as Andrew has continuously said, like, during board meetings, we, our, like, effectiveness is gonna reduce the longer we go on. And also, like, less people are gonna be able to access meetings that are running so late at night. And I think that it's really important that, like, we're making meetings, and we're making time when, like, our community can actually watch them, and like, can actually, like, be there or be listening if they're interested, because, like, no one wants to be stagnant. Plus, like, the strain on staff is like, can you imagine if we had one meeting, and then staff had to, like, wait for their report at the end of the meeting for like hours and hours and hours? Like, it might be once. I just feel like that's gonna make.
We have met for hours, six hours sometimes.
But going, but going with what Byron is saying, that's exactly what we should be looking at, right? When we look at some of these, the meeting, agenda, timeline stuff that they have as far as the 12-day, 13-day, well, at some point, some of these things gets cut off. For instance, if, when you look at some of these things in here, if it's not, no items is added by this date, it don't get on. Whether it's board or whether it's staff, it just don't get on, and we move on, right? So I think what she's saying is that, when we look at everything in totality, when we put those secondary places in place, then it's more feasible to do it a once-a-month or a meeting type of deal.
Well, and also, I think, you know, another thing that could be perceived as that secondary structure that you're talking about is just the criteria that we just discussed. Like, maybe when you actually use that as a litmus test in agenda setting, you realize, like, okay, we don't have anything proposed for this next Tuesday that actually meets the student center objectives, so we're not gonna have a meeting.
So this section is about when materials are provided, when we get, you know, questions in, responses, so forth. I think we can talk about it in terms of our current meeting structure, right, two meetings a month, or if the board wants to seriously consider a different structure, maybe it's once-a-month board meeting, once-a-month work session, you know, alternating every couple of weeks, but we can do that before doing this section.
One question about this section. The student report, I don't need to have that written, right? Like, that doesn't need to be something that I give to them? Okay. I was like, 12 days, oh dear.
I'm wondering if we can hear maybe from Roseanne about this, or the board office staff about just, because, just a perspective of, like, just the logistics.
Staff actually digested these protocols that you all are gonna be discussing, and so, we did things like prototype a calendar, what would it look like if it were 12 days? And you can see how impacted and jammed up against going the way we're going. So, yeah, when we talk about a monthly, we can be really hardline and disciplined about two weeks out, the consent calendar's probably gonna be twice as long, but you better have your stuff in, afford everybody opportunities to ask questions, think in advance, because we're not gonna add a meeting, because you have the contract all of a sudden has to, you know, pending. You're really gonna have to be disciplined about it, that's just an example. But most of the feedback we heard from senior staff was, you know, when we have so many board meetings overlapping, 12 days is not realistic.
And in fact, we're gonna, Roseanne's gonna screen share the exercise that we went through, just to kind of jump to, to show in real time what this, what those 12-day looks, looks like, so, Roseanne? We also have Dr. Proctor on virtually.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna touch it off.
No, please.
But I think we are, I think we understand the 12-day stuff for the two, really, really realistic. So I don't know if we need to really go through this example, because I think we're familiar with that.
I do, I do like the visuals, for me, it's like.
We're gonna send it to Ms.
You just go to the third page, I'll leave it there for you to just react to.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are two meetings that overlap with each other.
But I do hear, saying that it could be more feasible, could be more disciplined, doing it at once a month, with these, these guidelines that's just here, whether we do these guidelines or not, but it's so.
I see two paths forward at this point. One, if we know that 12 days doesn't work for our two meetings, if our plan is to keep two meetings for the rest of the school year, then I think we need to talk about, do we want to adopt some timelines that work with our two-meeting schedule? That's one path. Or, let's not go down this road at all, let's have a more immediate conversation about switching to once-a-month meetings, in which case, let's see if we could figure out whether that worked before we dive into. In which case, let's see if we could figure out whether that worked before we dive into the timelines. Once we made that decision, you know, if the board says yes, we'll go to once a month, then, you know, then we can, we can figure out whether the timelines work.
I think we should try once a month. I, I'm ready to, I'm ready to risk, change things up.
And maybe we could put it in January, right? So it'll give us pretty much.
Yeah.
We get rid of the other the, the days we're holding, because
No, because we need those for bargaining, for executive sessions, for complaints. We're going to be getting a lot more complaints now, right? I mean, it's like, I don't, we can't do those.
No, actually, we're going to get fewer.
We should get, yeah, yeah.
We're going to fix the the formal complaint process. We should get fewer.
Okay. I just, we're the second instead of the third, so I thought maybe we'll get more.
If you narrow the focus to what we're legally required, the board is legally required to hear, it reduces
But, you know, with bargaining and all the rest of that, I, I don't think, we can't, we can't, we can't come here for one day a month and get briefed on all the PAT bargaining, do all of our complaints, do our, you know,
I was suggesting going from three to two. Because right now, we're, I think every month we have two board meetings. And then we're keeping it, like, tonight, like, a third date. And like, I would just suggest the discipline of, if we're going to go to one board meeting, then we have one other meeting. Not, well, actually, we're just spreading your work over, you know, more, more meetings.
Wait, wait, I just want to make sure I understand. So are you, so your, your suggestion would be?
Well, okay, so right now, we have generally two board meetings a month.
Right, plus a date.
And then plus another one held. Is that we actually, instead of just leaving it at, we're, we're going to have one board meeting and then we're still going to have two other meetings, which still require, you know, board members to come here, prep and everything else, is to try and have one board meeting a month. And then the other date that's being held for the board meeting become the work session, executive session, complaint session. So, like, like at tonight.
Yes.
Consent agenda.
Instead of that 30
Right, because otherwise, you actually still, we still have three meetings.
That was similar to what I was going to suggest, which is that if we go to once a month, maybe this is just temporary, maybe we can get better. But if we go to once a month, do we do once a month board meeting, but in between a work session? On the same day?
I mean, so, right now, we have the two board meetings a month, plus attached to those, we have holds on top of those.
Well, on those same days, and then we have a third day that's being held.
So if we're going to go with the once a month, whatever that, my suggestion would be, whatever that, the one that we're not going to do that once a month, nothing is scheduled for that day.
So when do we do all the other things?
So you have, you still have the other work sessions times. So all you're doing is taking away one day.
You mean, hold the work session two weeks after the board meeting? Hold those dates for work session and executive session and stuff. But get rid of the, the off hold.
We just
Like, the third week hold.
That's what I'm suggesting. And then you use the, use the second board meeting as the work session, the special hearings, the executive session, the bargaining things, all the other one. Because, like, right now, we actually have three meetings.
Right, so right now, we've got a board meeting, week off, board meeting usually. And then we've got another day, right? That's held, it varies per month. But let's say that's on a, on a Wednesday, right? You know, in between. I think, I'm not sure you guys are saying the same thing. I think, Julie, I think, I think what I hear you saying is, let's get rid of this. Do board meeting once a month, and this becomes a work session.
Correct.
But Gary, I think I don't do boards very often. But you're saying something different, aren't you?
Yeah, so I'm, so go back to what you had up there. So I'm saying if we are taking off that board meeting, right? Either one, you still have that day later.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, we guys are saying the same thing.
You're saying the same thing.
Yeah, whichever day is on.
But we, we adopt, we adopted, and I think people, like, set their calendars and personal calendars by, like, what are the board meeting dates? So to me, it makes more sense than to drop the
Who did that?
We did vote on the board meeting calendar.
Yes, we did. Okay.
And I, I mean, I set my vacations and stuff around when
Of course, you're a board member.
Yeah, but like, the whole, the whole one seems like the easier one.
Maybe you meant us, not like the general group. Did you think Gary?
Okay.
Gary's thinking the general public sets their working calendars for the board meeting.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna work on this. It is 7:20, I want to make sure that we're moving, because there's still a lot to talk about.
And see, and that right here.
This was
So when you talk about how you'd be efficient, you know, when you're going to once a month, exactly what you just did. That's how you've been efficient. Hey, you got here, we're gonna be here for
Gary, do you know how many times I try and cut people off?
I love that.
Oh, it's the hardest thing? Yeah, but the other thing is, when, when's another time we're going to discuss this? I think we're very close to consensus here. I think we can go forward actually.
Yeah, no, 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 I think we need to go, I think we need to let Roseanne go back through and figure out what would it actually look like and
Well, Roseanne, you want to chime in now? She has her hand raised.
Oh. Ms. Powell?
Hi, everybody. I, I texted Amy this, this one thought, and this is something that hasn't happened in the past, is you could convert a regular meeting a month to a steady session with a consent agenda or an extra session with a consent agenda. So you keep those held dates. Does that make sense? The ones that are already in your calendar. But we do, yeah.
Maybe sometimes you don't need it, but probably you often do.
But like tonight?
Black, black tonight.
We only had 48 hours.
Okay, so then two, two things coming out of this. One
But also holding one idea, I'm sorry, Andrew, but, or just caught. One of the other things is that we do, in budget season though, I think we should keep in mind the need to have times for an extra meeting, like, once a month for either a budget hearing or some if it's such a limited time period, I would just be cautious of that time.
That would be my, my thought, too.
Well, and there are, you know, regulations, you know, that we have to apply, so. So then, I, if, I think you're right, we're close to consensus. I think we can come up with a calendar, bring it back. Then the question becomes, you know, and really, I'll turn to the superintendent for this. If we're doing, and actually, I want to ask this, this two different ways. I'm going to suggest, I want feedback. If we did a board meeting once a month, that we would do timelines, and maybe this, maybe 12 days works, right? For a once a month board meeting. But our work session would have different timelines. I don't think the timelines would not exist. I think it's important to still have them, but they wouldn't be 12 days for a work session. They would be something much more limited.
Well, also, because what's being conveyed for a work session is information. It's not information that you need
We're not voting on it.
We're not voting on it.
Yeah, but I, also, I, I would have some timeline because, like, you want people to have had a chance if you have a day job, coming straight here when, like, here it is, you sit down and, like, you're absorbing it and you're raising an issue about something that's actually on slide 10.
We'll just keep the one that, the timeline that we have right now for, for the work sessions and then do like the 12 day.
Thursday and Tuesday. Yeah.
I mean, I, because I do agree that we need to have some life level timeline. Because I don't want to come, you know, Monday, and then you're telling me, oh, here's the information for tomorrow. Stop lying to me.
Having sat the days with people who've unsealed their packets, you know, right then.
That would be me.
Every single week
That would be me.
Was not right.
I did one on here.
That would read me.
No, I'm going to bring this back in, going to bring this back in. I think formalizing the work session timeline, but recognize it can be different. How do people feel conceptually about this idea that you're going to get your materials so much in advance? You will then have three days, maybe three or four, I can't remember in this, four days to get in your questions. If you do not get in your questions in four days, your questions do not get answered. And so I think this is the accountability. And then the superintendent has to get back within three days of those questions, right? And then that's an accountability that we hold him and his team responsible for, well, we hold him responsible for meeting. But then, you know, then you sort of, once you're beyond that Q and A, it, it's not the whole point of this, and I think if AJ were here, he'd be telling us, it's to avoid that last minute flurry. That the questions are asked, the questions are answered.
The information is shared.
If, and the information is shared with everybody. If, if the question is not answered sufficiently, then a board member may choose not to vote. May, or to vote, or to vote no, and say, you know, I didn't get the answer that I needed. But it's avoiding this sort of like, oh, well, now that we've got your, your Q and A, we're going back. We're doing a second round and a third round of questions. I mean, the, the goal of this is, is not to do that. Really, when you get to that final point, it's pencils down. The information is there, you can digest it, and you either have what you need or you don't.
But then what do we do with, what do we do with? So, we take that, I take the model, I like the model. But now, because I know I only got a certain amount of time, I got questions and I expect them to be answered. And so now, I submit, I got 20 questions. And I submit my 20 questions because I got concerns about them all. Then the responses that, that come back don't quite add up, right? There, it's not quite at the level of where I'm getting understanding. I'm getting clarity as to where it makes sense to me. And so I'm like, no, this, this is what I'm trying to say. What I'm concerned about here now, doing this, is if I know that I only got X amount of time to get my questions in, you best believe I'm giving you my questions and I expect a response. And then if you can't give me their response, I don't want to hear about, well, staff has this to do, what staff has had to do, and I don't give a dang. This is all the time that I got to get my questions answered. So if you don't want me to act a fool on the dais, then you need to answer my questions now because I'm going to show point out that I've been trying to answer this, ask this question. You have failed to respond to my answer, and now we're here. So don't put this on me. So I'm trying to play both sides here. Because if we stick to something like this, then that's what we end up coming to, right? Because now, you're putting us in a position, from a board perspective, I'm not voting for something that I don't have clarity on. And I don't want to hear, I don't have time to give you clarity.
And I think that's, and that's the accountability part that we're talking about. Like, if we're going to this model, accountability is that, okay, we have four days to get the questions in, superintendent has three days to create it. We're not, there's no excuses why they don't come back. And I think that's the accountability piece. There's like, there's no excuses that we don't get them in, right? If for whatever reason, I don't care what it is, if we don't get them in, we just don't get them in.
So they, and we say
Let me, let me ask, because I agree with all this today. There is also a reasonableness. If I submit 500 questions.
It's four days.
And there's three days, three days to answer. At a certain point, as individual board members, you get to decide whether you have enough information to vote or not. But here's the trick, and this is where we get back to, we all as individuals have no power. We only have powers as collective. If you say, or I'm going to use myself as an example, if I submitted 20 questions and, you know, the superintendent, he gets back on, on, on those 20 questions, but some of them are a little bit like, you know, like, like, I don't think you need this information to make a vote. And I say, at the board meeting, I didn't have enough information, I'm voting no. But six board members, or five or four board members said, I had plenty of information, I'm voting yes. We're moving on.
My question is, why isn't even on the table to vote? So if I can't, if I have a certain amount of time to get my questions in, or I don't get to talk, then you should have a certain amount of time to get clarity, a clerical, a clarified response, or it doesn't make it to the table. Take it off.
But, but one, but, but what I'm getting at is, it's only a collective as the board that gets that decision.
But the, but what you, what you just said contradicts because what you, what you just stated was that they feel you don't need that to make a decision. They don't know what I need to make a decision. They don't get to tell me what information I need to make a decision. Their job is to respond to the, the questions.
500, I said 500 questions.
So
Anything?
That's, if it's about that thing, if it's, if it's about the thing and it's student focused, and it, it's focused on what we're doing from an academic perspective, and I need clarity, then answer the question.
But, but actually, this is important, though.
Oh, it is, it's very important.
What if six other board members say, Andrew, I don't need that information? What, why are you, why are you asking, why are you asking them to spend, you know?
Thousands of hours. Questions were the legitimate amount?
Yeah. What I'm, I'm trying to, first of all, I think he's going to answer all the questions. Because I think we're all going to ask reasonable questions. But we do need to be prepared for a situation where a board member just launches on something. And, and at which point, it really is, the superintendent needs to use, you know, his perspective to sort of say, am I going to dedicate 10 staff, eight hours a day for the next three days to answer these board members' questions? Or am I, or am I going to do something?
It's not our job to manage.
No, but wait.
What you're doing right there is trying to manage. It's not our job to manage, it's his job to
No, that, that's what I said.
I know, but what you're doing is you're trying to manage for him. It's his job to manage, not ours. Our job is to get the information to make a, the decision, not our job to manage. If he had, if we sent 500 questions, take that, he's in 500 questions. It's his job to get his staff of this $1.8 billion orientation that we have. I know, I'm just saying as an example, but it's not our job to manage, it's his job to manage.
But, but, but for one board member?
Regardless, that's, but that's, that's, that's the guideline that we're setting up.
Oh, so then, then, then if that's, if, if we're suggesting that any single question that any board member asks has to be answered, then I don't support that.
So can I bring this conversation back? Because previously in our protocols, which were not adopted, we had language around information requests and questions. About like, if it takes longer than X amount of time, then, if the superintendent determines, then either the board chair makes the call or the board chair gets a sense of whether the majority of
And that's in here later. There's not in this section.
So that's the core of what we're talking about, though. Because it's like, if it's a question, you know, if you asked 30 questions and 25 of them can be answered in like, you know, five minutes, then yes, they should answer them all to satisfy your need. But if you ask 10 questions that nobody else thinks are relevant and that are going to send staff
But nobody else is going to know those questions. Because they're going to, they're going to the superintendent. So I, I won't know the question.
Because it goes to a public Q and A.
Well, no, that's happy he answers them.
So, but you're talking about something different, Amy, because information requests, there is a whole process. But we're talking about things we have to vote on.
Yeah. But no, what I'm, I hear what you're saying, but what I'm saying is that, I won't know what questions Andrew asked because they're going to go to him, and he's going to provide a question answered three days later. So I won't know what those questions are. But what I hear you saying, I understand what you're saying. And, and so my thing is, we say we get a superintendent, Michael Saygaloop, who don't want to answer questions.
Right.
Who's like, no, I don't think that's good for you, I don't think you need to know that.
The most collective board can push back on that and say, no.
We, we vote against? Definitely.
Well, no, no, I know, I'm just saying, but you, you, I think we have, use the, the, the reasonability, right? I don't think we're going to have 500 questions, right? And I think he's going to do, I think that any superintendent is going to make sure that they answer the questions as much as they can. So I think we have to use a little bit of reason, that reasonality with not thinking it's going to be one extreme or the other.
I already have been praising her again for a while.
I also think, like, I wonder, so answers will come back. What if board members have questions about those answers? And you just can't ask them? But I feel like at some level, like, you, you could have 500 questions, send them in, they provide you. You're always going to have, like, questions about those responses, like, most likely. And so I feel like, like, the problem that I see with, like, setting it up like this is I just don't know if there will be the, the I don't really, I don't know if, like, we'll be able to just be like, okay, here's the three days, ask all your questions, you don't get anything else. Because there will, I feel like a lot of board members saw questions on those things, and just getting that.
I think the problem, I'm going to speak, the problem I'm trying to solve with this section of the protocols is the flurry on Monday and Tuesday for board.
Yeah.
And I think that's bad. That we have a ton of questions coming in, staff are scrambling, their answers, I mean, I don't read my email, I can't read my email on Tuesdays. So I come to a board meeting, you were talking about people opening their packet. I come to a board meeting on Tuesday, I've read through everything we had, I've gone through all the materials. And all of a sudden, people are saying, oh, there was an email that came around at 4:15 today. Oh, did you see the email, you know, last night at 6:30 PM? And I'm like, you know what, I haven't seen that email. And half the board does it and half the board doesn't. So the problem I want to solve is making sure that, at some point, well in advance of the board meeting, like, the pencils are down. We'd be vast, and, and, because pencils get put down no matter what. They just, right now, they get put down at 6:00 PM when we start our board meeting, right?
Yeah. But I think, I appreciate the conversation.
Yeah. But I think, I appreciate the conversation. I, I, I think we're all trying to resolve sort of a problem we're all commonly experiencing. So it's much easier for me to commit to say, we're going to have once a month. We can, and we can adopt a much more disciplined approach to how we manage this, right? If for the regular meeting November 1st, by October 15th, you can bet, you're going to, you can expect to see a real time live Q and A. You'll see the questions because they might be the same ones you had. Uh, there's a follow-up question and we might even sort of note time, you know, that, you know. Maybe there, there's a reason, there's the reasonableness, but you know, yeah, we have three, four days, but now that staff knows that's once a month, they'll carve out a little bit more time to make sure they're ready to have bandwidth to, to answer those uh, in, in advance. And if it's something that's just like, look, here's what I can say about this now after a little bit of research and time and this part of your question may take another eight hours, uh, then, then the board has to sort of over time, look at the cumulative sort of effort that it takes collectively and decide, you know, is this how we want to spend a resource of staff time? And we're seeing how much, but until we capture it and can quantify it, it's, it's, it's hard to do that. I think we can make a good faith effort, you know, to try it on. I, I'm excited by it because I think it brings some sanity to the workflow around here. And we could just move with the cycle of the month, uh, to make sure you have what you need well in advance and that everybody's prepared and we know what to expect. And it cuts down on all the questioning live in the regular meeting because you've already asked those and they're publicly posted, so.
I would be comfortable with, sorry, with the idea that the, that every question is answered, but the answer might be it's going to take eight additional staff hours to get that data. Is that the will of the board? Because that's my concern is we want to, we want our senior staff and all of our people to be focused on students. And if so, there's, if they're spending, I mean, that's, that's thousands of dollars that we're having spent on board member questions. So I think then we as a board have to take responsibility to say, yes, we want you to then spend all that additional time on that answer. But I think the answer could be this is going to take us 10 hours to find this information. Is that actually something, is that the will of the board for us to do that?
And I think, and then I think that goes back to the leadership of the board, right? Say, you know what? No, we're not going to do that.
Yeah.
Right? Because so that way the leadership of the board can say, you know what? This question came in, they're going to estimate it's going to take 10 hours. And the chair, board chair has to say, you know what? No, we're not going to do that. Or yes, we are going to do that.
So I think that's the way to answer all the questions. That makes me comfortable that it might be, it's going to take this amount of time. Is that really what you want? Is that really what the board wants?
There's a little trick in that in terms of the board. I think you can go back to leadership. It can't go back to the board.
It has to go back to leadership. Yeah.
The board can't make that decision outside of me.
Well, I just want to say, I think also we're having this conversation, I think, oh, I just want to remind us that, that the relationship between staff and board continues, right? Like, so there's still the expectation that you have regular meetings with Roseanne, we have cabinet members joining you depending on the items. And so there is ongoing conversation. We're not going, we're not going, we're not reverting to just paper, right? An email. It's like, we're still having a relationship. So you, you have, you have a concern or hey, you answered my questions, but I still didn't get clarity on this. Or, you know, some, because sometimes it's easier for you to have the conversation with the person versus going back and forth in email. So I just want to add that like, we still have the relational uh, trust that we are building and continue to build between staff and board that it, that should play into how this plays out.
Actually, I'm glad you brought that up, Jonathan, because I actually feel there are different standards. Um, there's a lot of focus on written questions and information being shared. But when staff calls and provides information to a board member, that doesn't then get captured and get sent to the rest of the board. And so you end up then having, board members having access to different information, which everybody's been really clear.
Can we get to that a little bit, the communication? Because I want to talk, I want to talk about that.
But Jonathan like brought up, so that's why.
Oh, yeah, I know. But I want to, I want to see, make, make sure we move it on this piece. Cause I want to talk about that. But I think that's on the communication piece. If you don't mind.
No, I'm, okay.
Okay. So it is, we'll, we'll come back.
I thought we were there.
Yeah, yeah.
Parking lot, that can come back. Yeah. And I'll just, let's move on. I just, I want to clarify because I think you and I are on the same page. My only, I think the superintendent needs to manage that Q and A process.
Yeah, definitely.
And then each of us individual board members get to decide, did we get enough information or didn't we?
Yeah.
And that's my point.
If I, if I, I look at it like this, if we got seven or six other people asking questions, we get that Q and A. Some of the questions that I might have or may follow, might be in those questions already, right? And I think as a board, we just have to say, this is the information you're going to get, right? And if, you have to use that information to make the best decision that you can. And then you just move on. It's got to be, like you said, it pins down at some point, right? We can't keep having, and I understand you don't want to follow up after follow up, but once again, it has to be pinned down at some point. And the board leadership has to say, you know what? This is what we're going to do. That's how we're going to do it and then move on.
One small thing on the consent agenda section here, is there anything else really important, Julia?
Yeah, well, I was just going to say, um, so I love the 12 days because we'll get 2,000 pages. Like, I think this is great. The eight days and the five days are going to occur in a weekend and I don't think we, so I think those need to be moved to Fridays or we don't want somebody, some staff person having to, you know, send something out on the weekend.
I would want us to mock up a calendar for the year. So everybody's very.
Then we can just shift the day so that if something is, is going to fall on a, on a weekend date, we can move it to after a week.
But I think business days.
And I think we interpret it as business days.
Business days, yeah.
Okay.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was under the assumption it's business days.
It's in calendar days.
Yeah.
I was thinking.
Oh, okay. I was not assuming business days.
I wasn't either.
And nor does it say that in here, so.
Yeah, it says, it's always been calendar days, like five days.
The mockup pad was based on.
Business days. Business.
So we got to mock up a calendar. I'm moving us on. Consent agenda, one small change. Um, this, this protocol says that two board members have to request an item to be moved from consent agenda. I think it should be one. I think the point of a consent, it is unanimous consent. So, um, and again, it doesn't mean it's going to be taken off the agenda. It just means it becomes a regular item. So unless there's any objection to that.
What number is it?
This is, uh, four.
Four, is it B?
Four days before the board meeting.
Four days. Okay, thanks.
And it just notes that, um, board members have until 9:00 AM on the following day to request items removed from the consent agenda placed on the regular, if two board members request an item to be moved to a separate vote, the superintendent will immediately make the change. I think it's just one, because again, it's, it's unanimous consent. And then what that just means is it won't be on consent. It'll just become a regular item.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
I do too.
Great. But, but the key here is that you, you have to, you have to let Roseanne know you want it removed by this deadline. If you do not let her know before this deadline, it is on consent agenda. And then, and then it goes on to say, a majority of the board could still remove it from consent agenda at the board meeting, but then it gets delayed for the following board meeting, which will be a month. Just wondering.
So what about this conflict of interest? So we're going to, so does that get changed if only one board member? Has it?
So this is a pretty small item. So if there's an item on the consent agenda that you have to recuse, it's just saying, they'll do a recusal consent agenda so that you can still vote on that one, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
So if you're removing, if you're requesting to remove an item in the consent agenda, it's not because you've got a question because you've had an opportunity to ask that question and have it answered. It's because you want to have a discussion, state your position.
Or you're, you didn't get an adequate answer.
Okay. Um, additional meeting expectations. These are mostly repeats from before, I believe. You know, board members should come prepared. The time is used as a guide. Uh, we should strive to start and end the meetings on time. Confidentiality, yes. Uh, listening, yes.
What?
Uh, you're expected to cast a vote of staying on all matters. Uh, seven, if they miss a meeting, board members and leadership team agree to review video to stay current. And then again, all, I'll, this one, actually, let's talk about this really quickly. Board number eight, board members will submit all technical and tactical questions prior to the board meeting. The board should not expect the superintendent to be prepared to respond to technical or tactical questions that are asked for the first time during school board meetings. Instead, the superintendent will respond to those questions in writing during the following week's regular board update. This came up a little bit in our conversation. This doesn't prohibit the superintendent from responding to a question that is being asked the first time. If he or his team know the answer, they'll answer. It's more about what that expectation. So if I haven't asked a question in advance and I get there and I say, you know, could you tell me about X, Y, or Z? If he knows it, he tells me. If he doesn't, he says, I'm going to get back to you in a Q and A. And I come up with a Q and A.
Yeah, the only issue I have, I mean, I guess I expect if we have something that's technical, um, on the agenda, I'm just like, the, the pers bonds, whatever. I actually would expect the, um, the staff, and I'm not necessarily the superintendent to answer the question about the pers bond, but I wouldn't expect to vote on something and be like, I'm going to give you the answer to your question after you vote on it. I mean, I just think it like, and again, this goes into the race and pilot aspect of it is like, you know, the people who have got stuff on the agenda, I would expect they would, you know, be at the meeting and be able to answer like most questions. And so this, this seems kind of like, whoop, no, that's it for some of you asked. So like, everybody else is going to wonder about like what the answer to that question is and you're going to have to vote on it, not knowing the answer. So I, I think it's overly.
I think we'll, staff will always do their best to provide a substantive answer. If it requires a little digging or some research or thinking to compile.
Well, that's different, but it's sort of like, if it's something like key, like I, you gave me the answer to the question, but something that got raised in public comment or in the presentation or another board member who has some expertise like that asked a question. To me, I, I think this is for like a public body and it would be one thing if we weren't voting on something, but you know, I I would want to be like informed and I would say like if staff is putting something forward that they can't answer like a.
So I think about it as two different ways. One, I want to make sure we're not missing the first sentence because it's not about staff, that's about us. Board members, Wilson, all technical and tactical questions prior. So there, the, the goal of this protocol is accountability on us that we have, we have thought through what those questions are. Now, that said, stuff's going to come up, right? And, and there's going to be something, like you said, testimony is a great example, where someone says something that, oh, I didn't think about that. And then we ask, honestly, I think at that point, it just becomes again, does a majority of the board have the information they need to move forward? Or does it move to the board if the superintendent says, I don't have the answer to that. I can get it to you. Does the board say, okay, you know what? We're actually going to, we're going to table this item for our next meeting because we don't think we have enough. And I think that's where just, as the majority of the board needs to weigh in on where we have.
Leadership perspective. Wait.
That's the trade-off, right? If you don't have all the information you need.
Yeah, it needs to go bump.
I mean, to me, I, I think from some perspective, what adds, um, credibility to the, the board and the district's work is like, when we look like we're informed about what we're voting on. And if somebody has like a legitimate question and four board members like, we don't care what, like, we want to just vote on it because we, because we have the information and maybe you, it's not your area of expertise. So, you know, you, you just are going to have to either vote for it or get your question answered. And, you know, I, I, I know there's things that like, I'm not a technical expert at and there's other things that like, I have a lot of knowledge about. And, um, I, I actually like hearing everybody else's questions and, you know, I think it builds a stronger decision-making culture versus say, hey, we have, like I have what I need because I talked to a bunch of people in the community. This is my field, so I'm good. And too bad, Gary, if that's not what you've done. So I.
But I think the trade-off, you use the word legitimate question. And I think that's where what's legitimate to one board member may not be to another. And, and this is where I keep coming back to the collective, what AJ would say, I'm sure if he were here is it's not up to each individual board member to decide what's legitimate or not. It's up to the board as a whole to decide. So I'll, I'll give it, I'll give an extreme example, but if we were voting on like, uh, something having to do with technology, you know, for our students in and out. And I said, I would like to know the CPU capacity of every Chromebook that we're handing out to our students. Like each individual wanting, I need to know that because I, it's really important to me to know what our students are going to get. Superintendent's going to say, you know what? I, I don't have that information. Can we just, can I just say, well, until I get that information, I can't vote. So I'm going to hold this issue hostage until next. No, I think six board members are going to look at me and they're going to say, we don't need that information. And then it's my choice. I can either vote for it without the information or I can abstain, or I can vote no and say, you should have had that information here at the meeting. But I really think this comes back to the collective, that at a certain point, we can't let, because that question of legitimate, I mean, it, it, it really is important, right? And, and one individual board member may have a different view than, than others. And we each have to decide for ourselves, do I have enough information here to vote or not?
It goes back to the idea that no, we don't actually have individual power, board members, none of us. We don't. We think we do and, and the community treats us like we do, but we don't actually. And we, we can, we have influence, but we don't have power. And I think that's, that's part of how we've come to a culture of sort of trying to fight for each one of ourselves instead of looking at how do we best operate as a collective. And so I, I think for me, if Herman, if you don't have everything you need to vote, but I do, and so does Julia and Gary and Michelle, and then we're going to vote on it. And that's, that's part of like what it is like, you know, to, to be in a group and that, that's hard. And so then the question might be, if that consistently happens, then the board leadership should be like, okay, we have to do something differently. How do we, are Herman's questions just not being answered? Or does he need extra briefings? Like what is the problem? So then we, we, we don't just leave the board member out there hanging, but it's how do we collectively work together to get what you need if that happens repeatedly?
But what's important about what you're saying is that at the front end, we have our process. So everyone can get their questions answered.
Thing for me, and for me is, because I, I trust my board members, right? And so if there's an issue about art, and I don't know if there's so much about art, but I know, uh, Amy. I'm going to trust what she has to say as a board member because I trust, I think that's a piece of the board. I trust her. So for me, that's how it is for me if I don't have information on something or we're talking about some legal stuff that has to do with, you know, um, trying to think of something.
Well, the pers bond, I was like, what are you saying? Because I'm like, the pers bond is like billions of dollars. Like I'm terrified.
I do trust them because we all come in with individual knowledges of things and individual ideas and expertise. And so for me, is I trust the board members that have that to be hopefully making the right decisions. Without you having to, to be a personal expert on every single thing in this organization.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's rooted in white supremacy also, like where you're supposed to know everything. And leaders are supposed to know everything. Nobody knows everything. Good leaders know what they don't know and then they resource it, you know? I don't know how to do Excel. I'm going to get someone that does. As a leader, you know, you can't do everything well. And so you do have to have a, a level of trust with your colleagues, which I think I've displayed. And I, I, I mean, I know what I'm not good at.
Seven forty, seven forty-five.
Yes. So, so I'm saying I'm in agreement with this idea that if we're ready to vote, we're ready to vote.
Okay. I want to move us on to the communication section because there's a lot here as well. Relatively straightforward. Um, so at the top of, well, I don't have to stop at everyone's, but I think it is. Under communication A2, the last bullet, this is something we talked about the retreat, but I just want to reiterate. We're agreeing as a board, if we're contacted about an issue, we're going to provide the community member with the information on how to contact the appropriate staff person, or if it's not known, the superintendent is designee, which would be Roseanne, I believe, for general comments. But board members will not contact district staff on behalf of community members. And I will just own this, I do this. And I think that really the retreat was very useful for me to sort of hear the perspective because it seemed like, oh, that's the right thing to do. Like, I'm going to, I'll give an example, a community member contacting me about facilities issues at IDB Wells. And I forwarded an email to, uh, to Dan. And, and with the community member on it, and I said, hey, Dan, just wanted to make you aware of this. And then of course, Dan very professionally and immediately responds back. He says, thanks so much. I'll take care of this. That's directing staff. And I think in the retreat, that was really useful for me to recognize like, oh, shoot, that's directing staff, right? Like I wasn't intending to, I was intending to help. What this says is I'm going to get back to that community member. I'm going to say, you should contact Dan Young about this issue. Or, you know, whoever it is.
Here's his email, right?
And, and here's his email, but I'm not the one inserting myself into that process. So I just want to make sure the board's comfortable with that.
And if we don't know who, we go to Roseanne?
Roseanne can help us find that person. It's very good.
Well, I, I would say one of the things that would be helpful is that who are the people we're referring things to? Because like this whole thing that's going on right now with compacted math, it's like, everything's coming in. It's like, are we sending those just to Cheryl Proctor or should we send them to Guadalupe and Guadalupe sends them out? I mean, if, if it's going to be Roseanne, I would like have a really question about the capacity of the board office to do all of that. But I, to say like, we're getting, we're going to give somebody, and I'm not arguing for the current system, but I'm just saying like, like, how do you operationalize this? Like, am I supposed to be sending it to Dana, compacted math, or am I sending it to Cheryl, or am I sending it to Guadalupe? But I don't think I should be sending it to.
No, and when I meant Roseanne, Roseanne could help you figure out like who, 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 who the members.
But you know, that, that, we get.
Are you talking about?
I, I want like, I want to like, the sheet of here it is. Cause I don't want to call Roseanne every time I get a, a community.
Yeah, I don't want board members directing questions all up and down the org chart either. Cause then.
So we stand. Again, I want to be clear, we're not contacting staff at all, right?
No, but I want to, I don't want to have to call Roseanne every time. Like who should I be telling this person that they should contact? It's like, I want to know like where the portals are going to go in.
The chief academic officer or me and we'll get.
Because this is.
There's only like eight people on your leadership team, right? There's only eight people that we communicate directly with anyway.
But that's not what this is. So I think we should be clear because.
How so?
Well, I, I, I question whether it should say most questions. There's multiple similar questions. That's why we have the let's talk function. It isn't a single human, every human in the, every time you say a staff, a single staff person. And when it is a question or an issue of general concern or general interest, that's actually why let's talk. Provides, um, the sheet, right? The list of here are the topics and here's, uh, who will be responsible for answering them.
Great organizer for ticketing, very concerning concern.
And here's how quickly.
Sorry, I don't want to, I don't want to interrupt, but, but this is not the, this is your job to manage where the stuff that comes in. So for instance, if they didn't email the board member at all and emailed Cheryl directly or emailed Dan Young directly, they would, you would have direction for what them to do.
Your answer question.
So, so the only thing we're talking about here from a board perspective is what are we telling?
So for example, I, this may or may not have been the right thing, but we got a bunch of comments about the Llewellyn portable. And I wrote back to all of those folks and directed them to Hassan because he is the person above the principal. And so for me, that was the understanding of the org thing is like, if you, if you feel like you've gone to the principal and this hasn't resolved, the next step is this person and, you know, this, but that may not be the right thing to do. But I was just like, if you can't resolve it at the school, then you go up, you don't go from the principal to the board member. You go to the area director. But like with something like compacted math.
Below your leadership team, which is what we're almost supposed to be.
Yeah. So should I send them to the chief of school? I mean.
I want to be really clear here. It's, it's fine for us to direct people like, again, because we're not, we're not.
I didn't send an email to Hassan.
She's not contacting Hassan, right? It's just saying, here's a person you can contact. And just Hassan could have been looked up by any of those community members, right? And they would have contacted.
Yeah. So that's the, I mean, is that the right thing to do? But I've always. But I've always been taught that you try to resolve it like down the chain closer to the thing, but should I have referred them to you?
So we're in the weeds on this. I want to pull this back up again. Julia, what was your major concern here in terms of?
I don't have any objection to it, but I'm just like, I think it's unreasonable to ask me, especially when I have like longevity in my job, to like call Roseanne to say, like, I don't know who this is, who is it? So like, I just want like the piece of paper that says, if you get a question about this, whether it's Ailey's solution, like, hey, you go, you up, go up the next one, and then give me the chart with people's email addresses, so it's really easy to just, thank you for writing, you know, here's the person you need to contact.
Okay, so something that something that Guadalupe can can figure out is what what's the direction he wants to give to the board in terms of where?
So I'm agreeing with Julia that I thought I did the right thing, but I may not have, so it'd be nice to have some guidance of who do we, who do we refer people to in the org? Is it the principal supervisor? Is it the chief academic officer?
I'm moving us on because I think we're going to.
And the other thing, Andrew, the thing.
Yeah, no, no, it's okay, go for it.
Because like, I mean.
I I know, we have 10 more pages, so I'm just at seven forty-five.
So I would say anything that should be approved for communications, that we should have the ability to forward it to staff.
Yeah, what do you mean?
Guide, need a little more detail.
Okay, somebody makes a complaint, like a sexual harassment complaint, or my student was assaulted on a bus. Or this, you know, staff person violated the ethics rules. So for the district's protection, it seems like we, like, there should be a way to to send those. And maybe that's part of the chart, like anything, but what I'm concerned about is if we have, like, sending somebody whose child got assaulted on a on a bus to Let's Talk or to Roseanne.
I think mandatory reporting things aren't entirely good.
Hopefully, it's a much more limited number.
I'm calling for this.
I was confused why we wouldn't direct people to the executive staff of the district.
That's what we should.
That's great, then that we just have to know that's what the the rule.
Because it says that we're supposed to go to the superintendent or his designate.
Yeah.
I would like to, if I can make a comment, if it's okay, I had my hand raised, but I didn't know if.
Nobody saw that. You got to start yelling at people.
No, no, no problem.
I think between with the E L T, we could kind of come back to this and let you know exactly what we decide as protocol. What I do want to offer, though, is that it is perfectly acceptable to forward these things to the superintendent. In some districts, it goes to the superintendent or the chief of staff, and then it goes out accordingly. Or you could send it to the appropriate executive person on the executive leadership team. So, for example, the superintendent has two deputy superintendents, and one deputy superintendent is over three, four offices. The other is over the other three, four offices. So it could, and then from there, we can disseminate. But it doesn't have to be all senior staff, it doesn't have to be all staff. It could be really a very limited key staff, the superintendent, myself as deputy over instruction, school communities. It could be, you know, if we had a deputy over business and ops, and we also have a chief of staff. We could keep it very limited, but we could go back as an executive leadership team and kind of hash this through ourselves so that we could kind of give a little bit more support to the conversation and help the board to kind of help us all to come together with how it could flow as far as the questions.
Thank you. Okay, moving moving on. Section four here, I disagree with. If community members send a communication to all board members or a quorum that includes the board chair to violation, void violation of meetings, the board chair will respond on behalf of all board members and include an explanation for why they were blind. No, we're all individually elected board members, and each of you can respond to whoever the heck you want, so.
I think we had all.
I'm just going to strike number four. And then I was glad that we kept sort of the racial equity lens language. I think that was from our earlier protocols. But just making sure we're we're being really cognizant about who who has social capital and who communicates with us. I think that's important. Communication between board members and staff who do not report to the board. So board members will not initiate communication about business district with district staff except for the superintendent or designate. I think we want to talk about that in a second. If contacted by district staff without the direction of the superintendent, board members will follow the procedure about, oh, being contacted by a community member. And I think it's such useful because we do hear from teachers and other boards throughout the organization.
Can you orient me again, I must.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're in section B under communication on one, two, and three. Communication between board members and staff. And then board members agree to communicate directly with the superintendent and/or members of the leadership team when you have a substantive question or significant concern is arises. Gary, do you want to talk about this? You want me to talk about it?
Yeah, so, you know, when we're, I just, I have a opinion as far as how the chain of command should happen. And when we're talking about communication between board members and staff that don't report to the board, I think the onus and the responsibility should be to the superintendent. You know, when we're having conversations or questions about district business, that's the superintendent's job, right? It's not for him to designate to someone else. Now, how he met, once again, how he manages it is his 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 pre uh, option, right?
Priority.
Right, priority, however he manages it. But as a board, you know, we should be submitting all our questions about district business operations to the superintendent and then having him get back to us versus, you know, me calling Jonathan or me calling Dr. Proctor or, you know, or Dr. Adams. No, my employee is the superintendent only, and it's his job to manage the information or to disseminate the information out and get back to me as far as the response. And so that's just my my thought process on this communication between board and staff.
And that, to Julia's point about not knowing who to contact, I mean, that takes the guesswork out of it as well. Let leave it to the superintendent to make that determination.
So is this Andrew where I should bring up the other? I don't know where.
I think that's, that's, no, that's a little bit later, that's in the response. It's in the next section of communications. So I'm not trying to keep you from bringing it up, but I think I think it's, I think it's specifically. It's in section four, sort of whether we want to expand that. So thoughts, thoughts on what Vice Chair Hollins has raised?
Well, what I appreciate about what Vice Chair Hollins is saying is if you really have a question that's important to you and you haven't got a response or. I oftentimes will have no idea that you asked it, right? Because unless it came to me, there's no way for me to manage a response for you, right? And so it's for it's for me to figure out internally how I want to delegate, coordinate that, or traffic control it. But my my responsibility is to you, the board member, who asked. So, you know, and so we've been kind of, in the interest of trying to keep open lines of communication with senior staff and board members, trying to keep it a little bit more fluid. But reflecting back in hindsight, it's like oftentimes then it creates situations where there isn't awareness among the team that there's an outstanding question out there. Or or maybe it was forwarded to a few people, and so nobody knows who's holding it all.
Let me ask Gary, just to clarify a little bit. If if I were to, if I were to email Guadalupe a question about student enrollment, in that scenario, and I'd say, you know, I got this question about student enrollment, is it fine for for the superintendent to then say, I'm going to have Dr. Adams contact you?
No, he should, he should contact Dr. Adams, say, hey, however he does it, as an example. Hey, Dr. Adams, this is a question from the board, can you answer this or not? And then he squares it back, or he can have, yeah, so I would just say for him to forward it back. Now, he can forward the information he got from Dr. Adams to you, you know, or however he wants to disseminate that information. But I think in order to keep everything streamlined and aligned, it will have to, if it comes to you to him, it should come from him to you.
That sounds like a lot of back and forth, though, rather than, if you have a question, you ask the superintendent, the superintendent puts you in touch with, you know, Dr. Adams and.
But I think the trade-off.
Yeah, no, no, he's not putting him in touch with Dr. Adams, he's having Dr. Adams get the information and he's turning it back to him.
I think the trade-off was the chaos that we have now, exactly what you're talking about, not knowing, not knowing if people are getting their needs met, not knowing if people are communicating appropriately with your staff.
And we don't want Director Hollins or any other board director to chase it down.
Right, yeah, because like friends of Andrew is sending something to Guadalupe, and Guadalupe said, well, Dr. Adams, can you respond back to him? Or do Andrew respond back to him? You know, so I think that in order to keep it clear, however he gets the information, it's Guadalupe's job to get it back to you.
I've seen two different ways that this can work. I've seen the situation where I've received an email from a superintendent that would say, you know, Dr. Adams, please see the question from Vice Chair Hollins below. Please respond to him and copy me on the response.
Yes, so that's what I was suggesting.
I've I've seen that work. I've also seen where board members contacted senior staff and the expectation was on the reply, the board office and the superintendent's office were caught.
Okay.
So I I'm just, I just want to offer those two experiences that I've had that both seem to work.
And and both, I guess I was counting the number of emails back and forth.
Right, so we would do a little thinking internally about how to make sure it stays organized. Maybe I launch a new email that's distinct to the board where those things are prioritized. Or maybe we launch the function on Let's Talk that's just distinct to the board in the, I mean, there's a few ways to organize.
But that's, but that's his responsibility to do.
That's where we figure out ours.
What's efficient.
Right, no, I agree, I agree.
What's easy.
I think the old, I think the the, I'm in agreement. I think all our questions should go to the superintendent. I think maybe where I'm 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 struggling a little bit is is I also don't want the superintendent to be spending, you know, 40 hours a week on the phone with board members or emailing board members. And so I'm trying to think of like, I think I think the question going to the superintendent makes sense. I think it's the superintendent's job to manage how those get answered. And then if he says, you know, hey, this is a pretty detailed question from Director Scott, Dr. Adams can can, you know, and get back to me and say, I'm going to have Dr. Adams call you, right? To walk you through this. Or or, like you said, forward the email and say, you know, copy me on the response. I think that, let me rephrase it a different way. I think the communication from senior staff to the board is actually really helpful because these are the experts in in the room, and like having that direct communication from them to us works. I think it's when we go to them first that it causes some issues.
I think it's both ways.
But see, this is why I, again.
But but and I hear what you're saying, but I think then you get back to that confusion piece of him not being looped in and.
But he is looped.
But once again, we're not managing, that's for him to figure out. You're trying to manage how he does it.
I would actually say you're trying to manage because you're saying he can't allow his senior staff to talk.
No, 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 what I'm saying, he can do it however he wants to manage.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not, yeah, I'm just saying that he'll.
I thought you were saying that senior staff shouldn't.
No, 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 I'm just giving my opinion, but.
Gary just wants an answer from you.
Yeah, that's all I need, yeah, I'm just saying it's his job to figure out how that, however he wants to do it, then that's fine, but it's his job to.
He can like have, if Guadalupe directs senior staff to contact board members.
He can do however he wants to manage it, that's fine. It just, for us as a board, our question should just be going to him. However he misses it out, that's fine.
And Chair Scott, I mean, to your point, it's for us to figure out, knowing that we want the superintendent in schools, you know, like that is, you know, it is for us, he's going to assign us staff to think about how to support this, right? So but that's.
However, I'll figure it out.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, and I think my concern was having an executive spending a lot of time being the person to have to respond versus.
Well, if he chose to do that, then that's on him. I'm not, I'm not saying he should, but I don't want to direct him to do that, yeah.
Versus what Dr. Adams said, which is like just the superintendent would say, just copy me so I know it's been resolved.
However he wants to do it, my question is going to him.
Yes.
However he answers, however he answers them, it's fine, but that's his.
I already have asked that we move on.
I agree too.
So next section, communication between board members and staff. So one correction here, and number one, the only staff members report directly to the board are the superintendent and and audit staff. So general counsel does not report to us.
I would get rid of the rest of that stuff though.
I'm sorry, what?
Not.
You're on.
C, communication, section C.
The communication.
So communication between board members and staff who report directly.
I just want to know.
Wouldn't it be the auditor?
The auditors as well.
Just the auditors.
Just the auditors.
Yeah, just or the superintendent and.
So it's not general counsel?
No.
Not general.
No.
I would get rid of the rest of this stuff in that section, it's just not really relevant.
What do you mean, the whole, the whole two and three? Four, five and six? Well, actually, is this where I all?
Presuming all these people that report to the board.
Well, yeah, it's number four that we're going to, we're going to talk about it. But but Amy, I'm I'm a little surprised because like number three, number three contains like, you know, all requests, you know, should go to the direct reporter that designate, which again.
Yeah, I mean, we have to keep that, I guess.
The superintendent, and then and then this gets to the, you know, timelines for responding, which I think are important. Maybe it's two that you think is a little superfluous, right? Because I think that's just, that's built in other places.
I'm sorry, what do you?
Number two seems a little, it's just, it says it's appropriate for board members to meet with the superintendent. That's kind of what it says. And it's common for the board chair to meet regularly, but I mean, that that's all built into other places.
So that maybe.
That's the whole thing or?
We can get rid of number two.
Yeah.
No, just number two because.
Just number two.
This with that.
Getting rid of number two.
Okay.
And then number three.
Good stuff in three.
I think there's some good stuff there. And then number four, Julia, this is where any response to a question is. A question or request submitted by a board member or a direct report to a direct report to the board must be shared with all board members, the weekly update is emailed by all board members. And I think what you mentioned earlier was, you know, is this just written information or is it other information?
Yeah, like talking to A J, he's like, everything should be written. And so I'll just personally how I feel is there is this focus on, hey, you got a written response, you need to share with everybody else. But then there's all these like phone calls and meetings happened, some of them initiated by staff, like before board meetings, like, hey, we want to make sure you're okay with everything. Information gets transmitted and that is not shared with anybody else. And so my my sense is, is whatever is applied to like the written rules should like also apply to, you know, I I call Dr. Proctor and say, I don't understand how this compacted math works. I'd like to set up a 15-minute phone call because I've got a bunch of questions out of, because there's something, like, we're going to vote on a curriculum at a board meeting. So I get my questions answered, and if it doesn't, if staff doesn't then share it out to the rest of the board, then you have the same situation that people.
Yeah, so I agree, I'm going to make one addendum because I think you're not calling Dr. Proctor. You're, just hold on a sec, you're you're calling the superintendent to say.
No, I'm just saying.
I'm just, I'm walking through the new protocols.
I have a question.
Can I finish?
I'm not, I'm just.
Okay.
I don't think this one is talking about the superintendent or your leadership staff. This is, I think this one, as far as directly to people who do work directly to the board.
That's the superintendent.
The superintendent and the auditor.
So that's, that's the only people we're talking about here.
Yep.
Yeah.
Have you guys talked, okay, I just wanted to make, to get that clear.
So that's why I'm just, I'm clarifying.
Thank you.
Under the protocol, under the, under the protocols, Julia's question about compacted math will go to the superintendent. Let's assume the superintendent says, Dr. Proctor, could you call Director Per Medwards because she has questions about compacted math? You have that conversation. I completely agree with you. If 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 Dr. Proctor is delivering new information to you that has not previously been provided to the board, it's her job to report back to the superintendent and say, hey, I had this conversation. By the way, I shared some stuff that hasn't previously gone out, and I assume the superintendent, it's fine if we want to document it, is going to say, great, could you make sure that gets out to the rest of the board as well? And I think I think it's a really good.
It's easier to send an email. They're reacting to like Jonathan's statement, and maybe you're going to amend it because now everything's going to Guadalupe. But I sometimes feel like, hey, it looks like they talked to everybody else on the board except for me. And like, I submitted my questions because, you know, when, especially when I was, had a regular, you know, eight to six job, I had to send my questions at night. Like, I couldn't pick up the phone and call people. And so I sometimes feel like, hey, or hey, like, we're, we need to round up the votes for something, so we're going to call and just check in with people. Or new information came out that was shared in Roseanne's weekly one-on-one meetings that everybody else didn't have access to. And so whatever the system is, it needs to be equitable of like how that new information, whether it's a phone call, a meeting, or a written question. Because actually, the written question, I mean, A J, I say, his his perspective was, it all should be in writing because that, like, people have questions versus calling up, you know, the superintendent and asking the question. Because then you have some clarity on what the question is and what the answer was, and not in a game of telephone. So I I feel like there's different standards right now for different methods of communications, and I think we could have a standard.
Yeah, so I think tonight's conversation, in the way that we've been talking about, might hopefully alleviate a lot of that. So we've already agreed that if there's questions, they're going into a logged Q and A, so everyone's going to see them.
so everyone's gonna see them, for action items, where there's questions. And then we just finished talking about, and then when there's other kinds of general queries or questions, those would come to me, you'll get a response. So the only question is, are we distinguishing questions that are related to an action item on a board agenda from just a question you have in an area of interest that you got an answer to? And then, does the board member feel like, "Well, that was pretty substantive stuff, but maybe I'll share this out with everybody." Or maybe the staff member will, but are we doing that for every question that the board may ask that's not related to a board regular meeting agenda item?
Right.
And then the briefings are just another opportunity that both staff especially tries to, for directors, before board meeting when we have a big topic. And the information being shared is the same information being shared.
Well, and our one-on-one with you, like, all of us should have one-on-ones with you where we have a chance to ask questions or bring up topics or hear from you.
Right, but I'm not cataloging this week, when I met with Ale, we talked about these three things.
Right, briefings are different questions, and so if you're not, because it's specifically designed to avoid a quorum, then those briefings, like, people are getting, because different questions get answered, and so people are getting, are getting different information. And so, again.
I guess I'm struggling, though, because it is a really important part of any government, to do briefings with elected officials. So how do you, I mean, do you have a proposal? I think you're right, like, I would, I would amend this to say, any response to a question or request, whether written or verbal, that is submitted by a board member to a direct report, I think, I think, I think you're right to capture those things. But I, I don't go so far as to say that we shouldn't be doing staff briefings, because a staff briefing with one board member may have, be a different conversation with another, that's.
I'm not saying they shouldn't happen, what I'm saying is, everybody should get the same information. So if.
We all have the same information.
Okay, but in those briefings, people ask questions and they get answers.
But you're getting just what you need, because you ask your questions in your session, you get what you need.
The whole, the whole issue here is like everybody having, if, everybody having the same substantive information. I'm talking about little, like, minor immaterial questions. I'm talking about like a big, you know, a big question, like, "Hey, Herman asked this question in the weekly briefing that, you know, about something related to North Portland" that I wouldn't have any idea about, like, "Hey, how's this gonna impact, you know, Roosevelt? Because it's got a different enrollment or CTE program." It's like, if it's something related to, this is gonna go back to, related to something we're gonna vote on, I would think everybody should get that information, because, because it's, it's relevant.
Roseanne will often say to me, "I think, Andrew, you're on Mondays, and who else is on Mondays with you? Are you Gary?" I can't remember, but at one point she'd be like, "Oh, Gary asked this really great question in their briefing." Like, she would do some of that. So maybe we ask that whoever's doing the briefings could capture any substantive questions and share them with the full board. I mean, I think that's the way to do it.
That's what I just said.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't think, for example, like, things that we're not voting on, that's like a totally different topic. And I do think that, then you have the standard of, like, "How much time is this? Like, do you really need to know the details of compacted math, because we're not actually gonna vote on it?" Or, versus, "Hey, we're gonna vote on this curriculum adoption, and I don't, I don't understand it."
Okay, so I'm gonna go with.
I have a comment about this, I know we're over time, but, so with public contracting, when contractors come to like the zoo to do a walkthrough of the animal cages in order to bid on it, and questions come up from different contractors.
Everybody gets the questions.
Someone takes all those questions down, and a memo gets sent out to everyone that showed up at that, you know this, Gary. Everyone that showed up at that meeting gets the same, whether it was their question or not. And so it sounds like we need to figure out.
I'm gonna come back to, any response to a question or request, whether written or verbal, that is submitted by a board member to a direct report must be shared with all board members. And that captures it, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, so, so we just.
Any question? Any response to a question or request? Whether it's a briefing, whether it's an agenda item, or it's just a one-on-one.
I think it should just be, from a humanities, humanities standpoint, just things related to a board meeting, and then at the discretion of the, you know, of the superintendent, otherwise, because, you know.
I agree, that's a good distinction.
I do, too.
Because we all should, I mean, I benefit from.
That is related to an upcoming agenda. Their meeting agenda items will be in the running Q and A log, everybody will see those.
Whether they're formally submitted via email, or they're asked in a briefing, or whatever.
And then I heard, for any small group board briefings, that notes would be captured and shared out at the end of those briefings.
Thank you for summarizing.
And then the individual Q and As that are just front-of-the-mill, have a question about this or that, we'll decide if. Great, any comments on the rest of this section? Okay, requests for information or decision-making, so section.
Actually, why are we removing, board members need adequate time to review materials.
Sorry, where I've not.
It's under number six. I mean, sometimes, like, I want to be super cognizant of, like, what we're asking of staff, but I also think.
Sorry, which section, the communication section, or?
Underneath number six, it's, well, it's not on your, if you have the red line version, it's not there anymore. It, it's under the communication section, and it's, I have the red line version, that's why I can still see it.
And it says what, again?
It says, "Board members need adequate time to review materials before meetings of the board." And that would be like executive sessions, everything.
Isn't that captured in the, the whole timeline section?
Timeline section.
Well, only if we're considering it for all meetings.
Because we haven't set a schedule for work sessions.
Right, but like we talked about about an hour ago, there'll be a timeline for the board meetings and then a timeline for work sessions. They may differ, but we'll have clear timelines for each, right?
As long as for everything there is, because I, I feel like sometimes it's like, "Wow, that was a lot of work," and it just all gets pushed off, and it's like, hey, now all that work of this, this building then, you know, gets funneled into board members to look at it. And to, to me, that's part of the, you know, also, you know, recognizing staff needs time, but also just a statement of board members. Anyway, it's important to me, because I feel like sometimes it's like, hey, you got the information, it's like, "Yeah, but I have, you know, acts at work, and I could never look at something that you sent on."
Right, but I think that's solved by, by time, by adopting time.
If, if, I'd need to see the, the previous draft or the current draft, doesn't have it. So I guess I'll wanna just hold on to that until I see whatever the new.
The current draft you have in front of you has the timelines, right? The 12 days, eight days, five days.
But does that apply to, for example, going into an executive session on bargaining?
No.
Okay.
Because I don't think we can come out of a, a session on bargaining and brief us, unless we wait 12 days for it.
Well, what I, okay, I'm just speaking for myself, like, going to a meeting, like, and being like, okay, we need your decision on something, and now we're gonna put it up on like.
What's your suggestion for the protocols?
Leaving in the statement of, that's currently in here, "Board members need adequate time to review materials before, you know, means the board materials should not arrive, you know, should not arrive or be changed late in the process."
So, I, I'm just, but it's pretty subjective, what was in there before, what's adequate, is adequate? Two hours, 12 hours, two days?
Wouldn't be overly prescriptive.
Well, no, no, but I think it's important, right? I mean, because, because it's been in there, and, and.
And, and consistently, you know, we show up at meetings and, and there are things that are brand-new to the agenda, or like, we're just.
Seven days?
We're seeing a presentation for the first, like, a PowerPoint for the first, first time.
You can't make decisions in executive session anyway.
Right.
Right, isn't that?
But we're, a lot of times asked to set direction.
Right.
And, you know, I, I don't think we do our best, best work on the fly. And I may be asking you a question that's on like slide 10, but, you know, I didn't know it was on slide 10.
I actually think the subjective standard has a place there for those kinds of issues. So, there are some, that puts a professional, puts professional judgment on the part of staff. To say, "If we have these three days in advance, we can send them out. But if the meeting with PAT just happened, and we need a bargaining update in the last 36 hours, we'll do it as quickly as we can to get you..." But, I mean, there is some give in terms of how much in advance of a meeting the substance actually exists. And so, there, I do think board members should have enough time.
And I recognize that, but I, and I also still consistently go to meetings where it's like, and I'm usually texting Roseanne with like, "Hey, I've never seen that presentation before, like, where is it?"
Yes, and sometimes that PowerPoint's just a distilled version of the documents that have gone out that's for the public to see, and sometimes it's not. But when it, when it is, those, those, I don't, I don't know, I, I, maybe I'm not very clear, maybe I'm just tired. I, I, we should level set expectations, and staff should be candid about capability to have all presentations that are going to be in meetings done several days in advance. It's just not how the data and the presentations come together. And I, I look to my colleagues here about whether we have either substance or capability to do it that many days in advance for the formal presentation that's, that's largely for the public to be able to absorb complex information in, in a PowerPoint form, which is different than complex materials and the paragraphs and the charts and the data. That distilled version, it usually is the last thing that we develop for those meetings. And that's why it comes in late, and I, we, we should have, we should level set on that, because I think we do have a disconnect.
And we don't want to make busy work.
So in this section.
And I don't make most of them, so, I mean, I'm.
This is a good segue into section five, because a lot of, some of the stuff. Before I move on, Chair Scott, maybe I missed this in four or five. It refers to a weekly update, I didn't know if we struck that, or if it's referring to something board leadership is preparing, or is that a new expectation for superintendent? It is a new expectation, and I think it shows up a little bit earlier in the protocols that, that communication, that there will be a regular weekly update answering the Q and A. Answering the Q and A. I believe it goes back, I'd have to go back and find it in there. I, I think it goes back to the timelines around board meetings. So the Q and A around questions related to board agenda items is one thing, but capturing questions and reporting back on a weekly, that's a different thing.
It, it sounds like there is an unwritten practice that's happening, that I've seen in another district where the superintendent sent a weekly update every week to the board. And it sounds like behind all of this is that practice going on an ongoing basis. So there's certain things that don't get answered in the moment, would go into that next weekly update, but I don't know if that's new or not.
We all have that consistently.
Superintendent, I think this is an, an area where, how you want to communicate out on a regular basis. I think, I think what you're hearing from the board is a desire to have a regular.
Can we just delete?
Sure, but, but the responses to the questions are going directly to the director who asked it. No. I think that's really key. So any response to a question or request submitted by a board member to a direct report must be shared with all board members as part of that, as part of that update.
Can we just put a period there? Any question or response, or any question or request submitted by a board member to a direct report of the board must be shared with all board members, period, and then leave it up to the superintendent to determine how that shares. Whether it's in the weekly, the update, or.
I'm fine with that.
And then, and, and that's in, it's only questions related to board, like, voting, like, voting.
Well, that's what I was asking.
Okay.
So that's, yeah, so that particular section, which is, generate a lot of discussion. Any response to a question or request, whether written or verbal, that is related to an upcoming agenda item that is submitted by a board member to a direct report of the board must be shared with all board members. Period. Yeah, upcoming agenda items, those, those will be transparently shared.
And we're including questions that were verbally asked.
Either written or verbal. That I'm aware of. So it would have to be directed.
I think we had, this is, I think what Gary's getting to is like, you're, it's your responsibility to tell staff, if you get contacted by a board member asking you about an agenda item, this is, this is substantive question, not like a formatting, or, like, "I didn't quite understand how that chart worked," or something, but like a substantive question.
But the boards aren't gonna be doing that.
Pardon?
We talked about.
But you're, you're gonna be the person answering those questions, not.
But the only question was, questions coming to me that are related to board agendas are captured in the Q and A log versus everyday, run-of-the-mill questions that maybe aren't an agenda item. Those are, those are also being distributed?
Okay, so, so there's gonna be no.
That's what I thought we. We are, we are down seven rabbit holes, and I guess I really could pull us back to, I want to pull us back to what is the problem we're trying to solve, and what are the questions that are remaining?
But this is a really important question, so I, like, I heard one thing from Jonathan about senior staff and relationships with board members, which implies there's conversations and information being shared back and forth. And so, but if we're doing the model that everything goes through Guadalupe, there aren't any of those other things.
During this one, during the one-on-one, so we cancel the one-on-ones?
Well, okay, but there's, there's more briefings than those happening, so like, what model are we using? Because it's kind of like, well, we're gonna use, everything's going to go out of the loop except for when there's like weekly briefings, or.
Everything's going to Guadalupe.
Pardon?
Everything's going to Guadalupe. He made, he made direct staff get back to us, written, verbal, he, there may be.
He made direct staff to give us a briefing.
And, and you know, maybe something in, in conversation with board leadership, we say, "Oh, you know what? We're gonna have staff do briefings with individual board members." Like, all those things may still happen, but it's Guadalupe's decision.
Okay, so Jonathan, you're okay, because you articulated something different.
Well, that about what.
But this is a discussion.
No, I'm, but I'm.
But that's about what Jonathan is, about what we let them know what to do.
I just want to make sure I understand what the rules are.
What'd you say, Gary?
We're agreeing to.
No, I'm saying, it ain't what Jonathan is talking, it's what we tell, what we, and we direct them to do.
I think you're talking about trust and relationship and people having conversations.
I honestly don't remember.
I hear what you're saying, yeah.
I want to be a little fair, clear. These are gonna get written and distributed again. So, like, we're not deciding tonight what's gonna happen, we're deciding tonight what's going to be written, protocols.
So let's look on the bright side, at least everyone's agreeing that we're gonna share information now.
Can we, can we, can we move?
And Julia, what I hear you saying is this concern that you want to make sure that all board members have equitable access to the same information.
I think it's equal.
Equal access to the same information, so, yes.
This is substantive, and.
But I think that's the problem we're trying to solve, and I, I, I hope we've been able to do that. And like Andrew said, these will come back, so we can all take a look.
And then we can figure out if our new systems are working, yeah?
Does everyone have their say on this, please? Can I move on to the next section?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Section number six, requests for information and decision-making. Providing documents to the board in review and advanced meetings, what we were just talking about. So this gets to the agenda, and again, if we're moving towards a, a once-a-month meeting, I think we can do this. The agenda will be done 14 days in advance. Notes from agenda sending will be sent out to the entire board by the board office. But again, I think we're also talking about the board chair communicating about specific decisions. Capturing that here. And then there's your report from student representative and superintendent, Byron, so officially in the protocols. The majority of items that require board action will be first reviewed in a board committee meeting, an executive session, or a board meeting. So again, I guess things, it gets back, I, I like the language "majority," because it allows the possibility that it doesn't, but I think, but if people want a different word there, I don't know.
Where are you?
I'm in section 5A3.
5A.
The clean version's, like, easy to use.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I have a red line up.
I mean, I will eliminate so many, I think, long agenda items.
Well, that's what we do now, for the most part.
I think this is existing language from our.
Yeah, it is existing language, it's just like not necessarily always existing practice.
Thank you much, most of the time.
Okay. So, number four, staff and the superintendent will have the board book and any supporting documentation available at least four days prior to the board meeting. So again, this is getting back to, we go through all our Q and A, answers back, and then sort of, again, pencils down four days prior to the board meeting, information gets provided in board book.
Do we need that, though, because we've already laid out this whole process?
I think this is just saying, this is when the materials are, I mean, this is kind of more of a public thing. I mean, it's available in.
Well, no, that, this protocol requires the agenda items to be 12 days in advance to the public. That's what it says.
It's to board members 12 days in advance.
I'm pretty sure it says.
It's both.
The superintendent will provide a draft agenda to the public and all appropriate supporting documents at least 12 days prior to the regular board meeting.
Where's that? I'm reading section.
It's, it's in the 12 days, like that.
Draft agenda, the public, oh, and all appropriate supporting documentation. Okay, I was reading the first sentence, just says to board members.
I think when we draft and design a calendar that has all the deadlines, it'll be clear.
But I think given that, you're right, we can strike four.
If it is.
Maybe it's be a holdover. Here, we're getting into PowerPoints. If PowerPoint presentation is given by staff during a board meeting, it will be included in the board packet with the understanding there may be changes. It's final board presentation, any changes will be noted for the board. Copies of final materials and presentations will be posted as part of the mini materials. Does anyone object to that?
No, no, I don't either. I think this isn't.
Julia?
I object to no one objecting.
No, I, it's done, it's great.
Okay, but this says PowerPoints can change.
And it will be noted.
Okay.
And it will be noted, and which is when we're going to do it.
When I'm looking at something, it's like, hey, I have, like, I printed this the day that you sent the board packet and I'm looking at a different PowerPoint presentation.
Can we note substantive changes versus grammatical or wordsmithing?
Scripters, scripters.
Or pictures. Is it graphic or picture?
No, if you change the picture, I want to know.
For example, Johnson, like, I, I agree, like, those are fine, but like, for example, if you change the order of the slides, sometimes if you've like looked at the slides in advance, a lot of questions, and it's like, hey, what happened to that slide? Or like, I had a question, but now like, it's not the order. So substantive, just so if you think about, some people reviewing stuff in advance and like, what should, what should we know that's like substantively, that could be order or like numbers changing.
So I'm going to add, and any substantive changes.
Versus like, we changed the picture of Guadalupe and which school or.
Number six for contracts listed, staff will provide memos, the actual contract will be available, memos are actually posted. So, okay, any further questions on this section?
Can we, just a quick question on number five. Can we limit to how many pages a PowerPoint needs to be?
We can do anything we want, we're the board.
But I think that's a staff, that's a superintendent, that's his.
No, I'm not saying what goes in those five, they can put whatever they want in the five.
How about a time limit and set up?
Oh, five, I'm telling myself, I'm.
You've got the best practices.
Is it because that, I think, and I know some stuff will need to be more, but a lot of slides we get that I've noticed so far is a lot of it is, I want to say fluff stuff, right? Which is, I, I get it, but if I'm coming at the end of the day and I'm all day, I don't need all the fluff stuff all the time. Sometimes it's great, but that is, but I think, I think people can say what they need to say within five slides. If we're going by, if we're going by what, at the retreat, we talked about those three things that we're supposed to be accomplishing as a board for, coming from a governance standpoint, as far as what are the inputs, what are the outcomes, outputs, man, what are the outputs? I think they can do that within five, six.
I think we need to trust our staff.
Yeah, I think that's.
I don't disagree.
Byron.
That's my opinion.
No, no, Byron.
I was like, oh, I'm sorry.
You're the only one who should be talking.
I just think that like, also, I, going back to like, we talked about this like a while ago, but mainly the PowerPoint presentations are usually for like the community. We get like the memo and, you know, we have time to read it and under this new schedule, we'll have even more time to read it. So I think that like, I think we should just leave it to discretion of staff. And also I, I like all the picture slides.
I, I want to.
Personally, we're going to make all of mine briefer.
I want to leave it up to staff.
Oh, you've, you've heard some people.
I want to, I want to leave it up to staff, but I actually like, I like the idea you're setting forward, which is that it should be brief.
Yeah, I don't disagree. A 10 to 12 minute PowerPoint presentation generally on a topic, you know, that's five or six slides, two minutes apiece. Some things will be brief, there will be some more in-depth, that's, that shouldn't be the norm.
The next section of committee protocols, we talked about pretty extensively at the retreat, most committees have done a good job of following up. It is, it is pretty prescriptive and I think this is one of those issues, or I'll be honest, I have not followed up with each committee chair to sort of say, you know, do we have your deliverables and the dates and all the rest of that? Any, any objections to what's in here?
So one of the things in, and this is part of hard ones that we have here, is if, say we're going to roll this over for 23, 24, it means like the first work that the, the full board needs to do is agree on what we want to do during the year and the work plan because these A, B, and C are all dependent upon the, the board figuring on its agenda. And then, then the, then the chair is like basically orchestrating what the full board has decided is going to be its agenda. And so in this case, like, we didn't have a long discussion at the retreat, very much about the, the work plan, so thinking about like that. So it seems like A should be actually the full board, I forget, it's, it's in here somewhere, the full board setting the agenda and then that, like, and here's how the chair helps manage that, but it's versus like the chair just telling chairs, committee chairs what to do. I forget where the.
Yeah, it's, it's back in section two, the board will align its work with the board about the goals and guardrails. There's a little bit before that about.
It's never good when the chair requires committee members to, or committee chairs to.
So it's, so it seems like loading that up at the beginning and then these other, the other pieces are going underneath that.
Okay, let me, let me see what we can do there.
For me, I felt like we should have, for this, we could have had more for the different committees, looking at the structure that we've been talking about, how does this, the student involvement, with the student focus, you know, like, what it, what is your committee, what role is your committee playing in, in student focused work? Because that's what we're, if we're spending half our time focusing on what's student focused and then the other is the residual, what's left over, then I think there needs to be a, a clear, defined, like, this is how from, and I'm going to use me because I only like to talk about me because I know all y'all got y'all's stuff together. Me on the other hand, I'm weird. And so from a, from a alternative in charter schools, how are you making sure that half of the time is focused on student achievement, student, you know what I'm saying, what students are doing, how their, how their, how their needs are being met? And then the other half of the time, we can talk about charter school business, but then what are those elements from the student achievement, from the benchmarking, how does that tie in with Dr. Adams and, and his reporting? How are we gauging where those numbers are going up and down at? Who do I talk to about those numbers? And that, so if half of our work is going to be around that, then coming into this now by making this shift, I need time to set that, set like this, this is what we're going, this is how I'm going to establish deliverables. This is how I'm going to, to go about looking at the data, finding out what it is that we need to be talking about, what it is we need to be gauging. Otherwise, I'm trying to do, I'm trying to do the soup's job. You know, it's like, and that's what I've been asking myself, like, how much of this, how much of what I'm doing, and, and again, this is just me, I don't know about everybody else, how much of what I'm doing within the, within the committee is my job versus the soup's job, right? And so, because that's what we had to ask ourselves, if it's, if it's my job, like board work or soup work, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to gauge, honestly, as we're trying to fit, because I don't want to do his job. I'm not good at it, I'm only good at mine.
Sorry, you're welcome to shout out.
We had like this whole conversation at the retreat about what.
Content per day?
Have we decided only the five that are outlined on our website, like audit, policy, charter and all, like those like core ones that have one, the P, one of the members' chairs are our committees? Or is it like kind of the broader thing that we discussed at the retreat, which is like anything that only the board can resolve is a committee?
It's legally required discussion.
Yeah. Because technically like district student council has like a policy, so we can only be resolved by the board. So do I need to be getting them to write deliverables for us? And would we get dissolved if we don't do that?
Yeah, I would put students in a different category.
Yes, we're dissolving you. That's terrible, like a school board.
And I think Herman, what I hear you saying is, as we adjust, right? Like, there's, there's a lot, given that time, right? You know, to, to make that adjustment. And again, thinking about if we get these protocols in place for next year might be a little bit clearer to put this.
A hundred percent. And, and I, I really feel like that if we're using this year as like what we say, the, the pilot year, then it's really causing us to, at least for me anyway, ask the question of why, why are we trying to hold on to something so tightly that we need to have a looser grip on? And you know what I mean? And so like, why am I so locked in on, I gotta have this, this, I gotta have this thing when really, do I really have to? I mean, is it, is it really necessary? And am I, or am I holding on to it because it makes me feel better versus it actually, you know what I'm saying, is substantive for moving our needle? So I'm, that's what I'm asking myself, that's what I'm dealing with, and so.
I think that's what came out of our retreat, you know, saying these are the deliverables, the deliverables are directly related to our board goals. You know, if you're contemplating doing stuff that doesn't fit that, that's not the work of this committee.
Last section.
Section 45, wow.
Can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
Question. When I see the really prescriptive language about if a deliverable isn't met, the chair of the committee is immediately removed. I think about policy development, for instance, and then there are other deliverables in other committees where I think it's actually a strategic or thoughtful piece, today we need more engagement. So the, the policy we promised on a certain day is actually going to be later because we want to get more feedback. I mean, not all strategic work fits in that little box and there's a balance, but that's a pretty draconian remedy, if you really mean it, and I haven't heard any discussion about it.
Yeah, no, and, and this came up, I mean, I don't know if AJ is watching or not. I, I, I understand exactly where he's coming from on this, but I agree with you that it's just not the way real life works. Here's, here's where it didn't bother me, is that, you know, if a committee fails to reduce its deliverable by the assigned due date, but that assigned due date can be adjusted, right? So I saw it as a little bit of a loophole, right? So if, if Ailey says, I'm going to have this policy out by January 1, and on December, you know, well, 25th will be busy, but on, you know, on the 20th, you know, Ailey says, we're not going to make it by December 1, to like January 1, then the question is, do we just revise that due date? Now the due date is going to be, you know.
To me.
I also worry about how this is going to be applied, you know, like who, who, who might harm.
Would the board be more comfortable, I mean, again, the reason why it's there is, is so that our committees don't just kind of go through the year as frankly as they often have, like, oh, what, you know, we got a committee meeting, we better come up with an agenda, we better figure out what to do.
It's been our wheels.
You know, it's been our wheels. So this is really designed to, we got a job to do, do the job, be done with it. But if, but if the board wants that, some of this language removed, we can, I'd rather not.
To me, it strikes me as like in this, as like punitive based system, it's like, well, we're going to remove you as committee chair. And it's like, well, what if it wasn't the committee chair that delayed things or that didn't move things? And like I say, I, I think it will, it will change the dynamics because it will be, it will be hard to not apply it somewhat subjectively because the chair actually doesn't come to all the committee meetings to know like why something didn't move or why, you know, it's like maybe staff raised a really significant concern or like, hey, everybody felt like we, we haven't heard from the right people yet. So to, to me, I think it.
Maybe add something about communication to the chair so that.
It just feels punitive.
Because like you said, you can, you can shift some of the stuff, but let's, so if we just add some communication stuff.
Maybe we could talk about a different remedy than.
Move on because Gary's getting anxious and when Gary gets anxious.
He got three sodas, he didn't eat two pieces of bread.
I'm worried about you over there with the two sodas. I'm damn on minutes.
And then what?
The last, the last section is performance concerns. I have very mixed feelings about this. I think it's important that we have, we, and I say we, I mean the board as an entity, have the ability to address really inappropriate behavior by a board member. I also think this is just very lengthy and prescriptive. And I don't want to, again, I guess I'm curious what other board members think of this.
I think this is something that should, we should be able to address in like one paragraph.
So have something, but maybe shorter and simpler. Other thoughts?
I would create a threshold of, and I guess I'm going to maybe try and define what you said, really serious egregious behavior, like violations of law and ethics rules. Like where there's a subjective standard, or I'm sorry, like objectives, more objective standard. Because, I mean, there are cases where that, that would be the case in my 20 years on the board, we've had a board member in jail before, we've had, you know, the others committee. And, and so it seems like.
We have board members in jail?
Apparently.
Oh, like a lot of.
I can tell you.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll talk about it another time.
And it's a question, it's like, is.
Yeah, you got it.
Here's my question.
Like, how, how to make it like less, if it is really to be like, hey, we can't remove this person, like that we.
So here's, so.
There's a jail term.
Okay, so here's the question on this. This is designed, this is designed to be for board members who violate the protocols, right? That's why it's in the protocols, right? Because, so I think the question is, and, but I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, what I think I hear you saying is violating the protocols should not have anything here.
Actually, it's, it's much broader than that. If a board member believes another board member has violated the conflict of interest rules, board rules and procedures, board policy, state or federal law, it's responsibility.
Sure, okay, you're right, it's broader, but it includes board protocols.
Yeah. So, well, again, I would like.
Let me, let me give an example.
Board protocols is our.
Always has in one another, Andrew. Not in extra.
You can always use me as the example.
Well, no, no, I was, I was just going to say, what if, what if I decide to.
See if they raise their hand.
Oh, Byron, oh, I didn't know you raised your hand.
You can go.
No, no, go ahead.
No, we want to know because we talk about board members in jail.
Does, does that, does this process also apply to me?
Yes, if you go to jail, you're out.
What if it's like for a climate protest?
She went to jail.
Well, anyways, like, I'm, I'm really hoping not to go to jail in like the next year. But if, like, do I just go through the same process, like a board member raises concerns about me, I'm taken to a one-on-one conference and I just follow this protocol?
I think so.
I think it's really different because we're all elected officials and.
Yeah, because also the ethics codes apply to me differently than they do to you guys. I did actually reach out to the ethics people and like ask them about it, just because I'm not like a publicly elected official. So I just have concerns about like, maybe just throw in a little caveat thing being like, just remember, not everything applies to me. And then also I have bylaws and a board policy that like pertain to my role. So also being cognizant that those things apply to me and not all.
Yes, yeah. Let's include something that speaks directly to the student.
Or we can throw it in my board policy, whatever you want, or just have something.
I think just to be, I'm, I'll just, I'll put myself in example. What if I, what if I start contacting all the principals in the district and telling them exactly how I think they should run their schools? And, and, you know, well, let's say I'm not chair and so the leadership at the time says, you can't do that, that's like, that's like a violation, you're not allowed to contact. And I said, I don't really care, I'm just going to do it. That's not a violation of law, not a violation of policy, it's not a violation of ethics. Do we as a board want to have an ability for a board member that says, I'm going to do it, that's my job, I'm going to, I know how to run these schools, I'm going to tell those, those principals how to run their schools. Do we want to have an ability to censure that?
Yes.
How, how can you censure? Ask the question.
Censure them through a vote.
So what does that mean? Do I mean?
Again, the way AJ lays it out, they become a censured board member and they lose, so, and we can decide, they, they, they don't lose their vote because we can't take that away from our, but they could lose access to Roseanne, they could lose access to the superintendent and senior staff, they could lose access.
They have to pay for their meals.
To meals beforehand, they could lose access to any training or development, they don't get to go to conferences, they don't get things along those lines. And what AJ would say, I think this sounds a little weird, but you know, he did it in his district, they would be introduced as censured board member, Anders Scott.
In lieu of a scum letter.
I guess for me, the only thing is if you have somebody who's been that blatant anyway, I don't think all that stuff is going to matter to him anyway. So I don't, that's why I gotta pay for some meal, or, so I don't get to go to, if I'm being that blatant, it's, it's, it's not a real consequence.
He's already, he already doesn't care.
I eat before I come, right?
If you can sit in the committee.
I'm just trying to figure, is there something legally we can do to, if we're gonna censor somebody, I'm thinking, do we not let them talk at the board meeting?
Well, yes, they can, they can be not recognized, yes.
Well, not recognized don't mean they can't speak. Just cause we say, when they're recognized, you can still talk.
Yeah, but if you're disruptive, I mean, you can be.
Alright, so I'm just saying, those are, that's what I would wanna know, what's the real consequences of, of doing something?
And this is presuming that we've done all these other steps.
Right, right, and we get to that part, yeah.
We've had the two, we've done all the mitigation steps. So now, if I'm hearing what Gary's saying, now in light of what, that means we've done, I've tried to talk to you, a couple of us have tried to talk to you. We've, we've gone through all these pieces, and you still blatantly say, man, I don't care about none of that, I'm gonna do what I wanna do, cuz this is Herman's room.
No, because I was elected.
Yes.
I was, I'm a duly elected person.
But absent that, then we can't do anything, right?
I mean, I, I will say that most boards have a censure mechanism.
Yeah.
Does that mean they don't get this? So when I, that's what I wanna get clear, so when we say censure, that means that we have a board meeting and I can't speak on the topic? Like, my mic is muted?
If, if, if the chair decides not to recognize a censured board member, to be really clear, I don't have to recognize anybody, right? I don't think I.
No, no, my.
I don't think I do stare chase chair very much.
You don't operate that formally now.
But my question is, what do that mean, like, I mean, I don't get to speak, like, my mic is muted? That's what I wanna know, what does that mean?
I mean, it could, again, I think that's something we, yeah.
By the time he got there, I'm praying that we've had several conversations.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that.
Difficult.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that what we do, it's gonna be some kind, some actual real action that we can take, versus just putting something out there that we can't.
But I also wanna be real clear, we're limited in our power.
Right, right, right.
We can't remove somebody.
Things we can do, but we cannot remove somebody, we can't keep them from voting. Um, you know, so, so, so the, I think what I'm, well, actually, I'm not here, I'm gonna suggest what Andy said. I think keeping something in here, but simplifying this, um, is what we may try and do.
I really like the number one, I really like the first sentence. Bullet point, just saying, what is the purpose of this and sort of the intention is to be in right relationship with one another, and to do so in a restorative manner? I, I really appreciate that as the foundation, that this isn't about, this is about resolving C one.
C one.
If general board member concerns about the performance of other members should model the district's belief in restorative practices by attempting to stress the manner in a non-public healing manner. This is the intention of the following steps to follow graduated approach to performance concerns. In the event of alleged illegal activity, board members should confer with the district's legal counsel to determine if this process is most appropriate, or if an alternate process would be more appropriate. I really like that, that grounding place. I think what those steps then look like are a bit prescriptive, um, but I do like the idea of like, one-on-one, and then maybe, you know, bring a buddy, and then.
Yeah, but like, get rid of all the verbiage, just like bullet point.
Yeah, it could be a lot simpler, you know? But I think.
And I almost spent too much time on this, cuz we're.
Yeah.
I guess the only thing I would wanna say, like, just.
I might get ignorant, you don't know.
It's some reference back to these protocols, that these protocols have been adopted by the board, so that we, um, you know, we all agree that we will abide by these protocols. And so, having some kind of mechanism like this is necessary when people, uh, you know, don't abide by these protocols that we've adopted. And even if we adopt them like, five to two or something, another tentative board governance is that, you know, once a decision has been made by the full board, you abide by that decision, even if you were at the center.
Okay, um, Roseanne told me, she said, there's no way you're gonna get through this an hour and a half. I said, no, Roseanne, trust me, trust me, this board, they're, trust me, you can do it an hour and a half. Here we are, three hours in. Any final comments?
Yes, Director Scott, I do. All right, you win.
I think they need to expire it on June thirtieth and be re-reviewed and adopted by, cuz every board.
I agree.
And, you know, if, say we have one new board member or four new board members, everybody needs to understand them, cuz I think then it's like, hey, I didn't know that was the rule, and kinda lock them. I do think that's a really important, like, grounding, as it goes back to the onboarding, is like, if these are the rules we're gonna expect people to abide by, and we're gonna have, you know, some punitive mechanisms in here, and just like, here's how we do our work, then we need to be adopted by every, cuz every board is different. Cuz I, I've never seen, when you haven't had a rotation off a board.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a really good idea. I hope it doesn't become normal practice to, to revise them significantly every year, cuz that'll just take up a ton of time, like, with our performance evaluation, we can't, again, just adopt something, keep it, but I think your point of each board adopting.
I mean, every, every board is different, right? So I think it should expire on June thirtieth.
It's the pilot too, like, I mean, I would expect, like, staff would have some input, um, maybe about, like, the change.
Done.
The next board.
Done.
I wanna, uh, this wasn't addressed under performance concerns, so, one, seven, A, two. This is about any staff member in the district who doesn't, other than the auditors and this superintendent. And, and it, it suggests that, uh, it allows for board members to speak publicly about concerns with staff performance. It doesn't do that in the context of all the other public discussions about performance. Doesn't have the language in there about restorative practices, or attempting to address the matter in other ways. It just goes straight into, as soon as you've talked to the superintendent, then you can talk about the performance concern publicly. I don't know, I can't think of any situation when that would be appropriate or productive, um, or fully informed. So I, I would ask that that be entirely, number two.
Get accused of some due process violations of the program.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, fair enough.
Well, do we wanna, did you say?
There's a, there's a query about that.
It's number number seven, A, two.
Number two.
So, there could be a discussion about a process that, as long as it's about the process versus about staff performance, that, you know, like, there are gonna be conversations about it in public.
I think this is framed by seven A one, which is such concerns that board members can raise must be limited to actions which are, could be illegal, or which are, could be violations of board policy. So I don't, I think two isn't broader than that.
Yeah.
So when you talk about concerns of the program or a function, I think that's different.
Oh, like, versus saying in a meeting, like, so-and-so, I think, like, violated the, the law.
So do we just, are we just, are we striking two, or are we, are we?
How about above concerns? Something about above concerns.
That's not sufficient.
Wanna take it out?
I guess, here's, here's my question, if we take it out, then we're actually taking out a prohibition that board members shouldn't talk about, staff concerns.
Well, you can rewrite it to say, board members may not speak publicly about concerns.
Staff performance, period.
We say it to public testimony.
You can just take out without the steps of that.
I, I, so I'm gonna pick up on Julia's, I'm gonna pick up on Julia's point though here. What if we had an illegal, you know, uh, uh, or substantiated, you know, illegal behavior by a teacher? That, if we just say we can't speak publicly about that, and it's public, right, it's in the paper, I, I don't think you can restrict board members from talking about that, or I don't think we should, right?
Sure, that's not the restriction here, that's, it's not even close to it.
I think it is, isn't it? I mean, if, if we write it to say no.
Or could be illegal. If they've been found to be illegal, then I think that's a different set standard, substantially different standard than what's set here. I, anybody can, in fact, we daily get allegations, uh, of misconduct, dates.
What kind of district are we running? What is this? Oh my God, this is a bunch of hoodwinkers running around?
So what's your recommendations?
That it be removed, that, that, so.
You don't.
And no board member may speak publicly about concerns with staff. Or, no board member may speak publicly about concerns with, uh, I, you could, you could edit the two bullet points about, um, in regarding illegal law, you could do that.
I think if you take it out, seven A one speaks to, when, it has a, like, when I become concerned, the first place I go is the superintendent. Right? And if you take that, if you take two out altogether, I don't think that ties board members' hands of talking about things that are in the paper. It also doesn't set up, it, it, I think.
I think we just wanna be clear, if you get arrested because you've been touching people you ain't supposed to be touching, I get to say something.
Yeah, we get to talk about Mitch Whithurst, right? Because that is, and we talked about.
I get to say something, so you not go, as my lawyer now, cuz you got, you got your legal hat on, I'm gonna say something.
Yeah, and, and if we're, I, I just don't know that you need to say, you may not, or you may if you've done these things. I think I read seven A one to talk about, where do you take your concerns when you have them, you take them to the superintendent?
So if you get rid of two altogether, that addresses the issue.
Right, because this is what you're supposed to do, this is what you're supposed to do. And then you have, I mean, it's.
It doesn't address whether or not board members should be talking about individual staff.
So I can't call a press release?
Correct.
Okay, as, as. I would just say, I think it's.
Just wanna be clear.
Board members can talk about process, or like, process that didn't happen. And that's not talking about, I mean, it, it is because somebody actually was involved in it, but that's very different than saying, so-and-so didn't do their job.
So-and-so did something that possibly could be illegal, or possibly a violation of our policy. That's what you can't do, that's what you shouldn't do.
Okay, but, but when you end the sentence where you said, just have it ended, that's actually says something different.
That's true.
All right, true, yes.
Because if you add on, if you, if you say, no board members may speak publicly about concerns with staff performance, you know, because they could be illegal or violations.
It's nine oh three, can we work on some language? Thank you. Any other comments, thoughts?
Thank you.
Okay. Byron, good?
Sorry, I, I'm really, really sorry, I just have one really quick thing. So, district student council, we have a policy, with that policy, we're assigned a staff liaison to the district. Um, just putting that out there, I don't, Yan is doing a great job. Um, I'm just wondering whether if DSC members or I have concerns about that staff member, our policy is very limited in terms of what a violation could be. So I'm wondering, do I just report any concerns directly to you? And, cuz that's something I can just go put in my bylaws, it does, I don't think it needs to be in here, I'm just wondering.
Did you say the board?
Because.
I think.
So the, so I run the, I run the district student council. Under our board policy, that like, is my policy because it has everything that I do as the student representative. It also has everything that our staff liaison, which we get assigned, the superintendent assigns someone to our group. I'm wondering, if I don't, if I have a concern that is not necessarily, necessarily something that they did that was illegal, and not necessarily something that was a violation of our policy, but is a relationship issue, should I report that to you? And I should put that in our bylaws.
No, I don't think you need to put it in.
Okay.
Yeah, and just do. Yeah.
Thank you for the conversation, everybody.
Thank you.
More to come, more adjourned.